Hey, do you all set?
Katie's having some technical difficulties, but she's actively trying to join the meeting right now.
Okay.
Want to give it another minute or so and if not, you can start recording.
Correct. Yep. You'll let us know when she connects, Jamie?
Yes. Can we give it till 7:05 and Katie's not here, we'll get started?
Um, do you have the ability to record as well, Jamie, or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it records a bit better from somebody else's vantage point than mine, but yes, I can. Pretty sure Patrick is Katie.
Hi, I'm on, I'm trying to get it to work on the computer, but um, but I'm here, so.
When you're here, does that mean you can record, Katie?
Um, not at this.
I'll record.
Yeah.
Great.
Recording in progress.
Is that your announcement, Jamie, that you're recording?
Correct.
Good evening. My name is Peter Basserman. I am chairman of Branford Inland Wetland Commission. I will now open the commission's regular meeting of May 22, 2025. It's now 7:03. Evening meeting will be conducted as a virtual meeting using the Zoom software conferencing platform, being conducted in accordance with Connecticut Public Act 22-3. Documents referenced during the meeting are available at the town hall or on the agency's webpage. Final agenda for tonight's meeting was filed on May 20th and is also posted on the town's website. Any changes to the agenda this evening, Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland agent, I just want to point out that under minutes for approval, we have a typo. It should be the May 8, 2025 regularly scheduled minutes, uh, minutes. And I also want to note that items, uh, I'm requesting that we table and continue the show cause hearings as applicable. Items seven, C, D, and E to the June 12th meeting.
That's Charlie David Easy?
Yes, correct. 20 Huntington At Drive and 15 and 7 Beacon Hill Road.
Does that require a motion or can we just move forward with that?
I think we can just move forward with that information.
Great. So noted. Uh, Branford Community Television. I'm sorry?
Hi, sorry, it's Katie. Um, I'm recording, we're up and running, so.
Great. Nice picks. Branford Community Television will be recording, uh, tonight's broadcast. Thankful for their time and their service to the community. For those speaking at this evening's proceeding, please be conscious of positioning uh, your face in the visible portion of the screen to ensuring complete and accurate record of the discussions each time a statement or comment is made uh, during tonight's meeting. Party speaking must announce his or her name before articulating the comment. It applies to any party wishing to participate. Those wishing to speak may use the raise your hand feature. Uh, and we'll recognize, uh, those wishing to, uh, to speak uh, upon the use of that hand raise. Uh, intent is to have the run, uh, meeting run smoothly. Commission, uh, wants to hear from any and all, uh, who are participating. Take a customary roll call now. Uh, Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Gokowski, present.
Mr. Begaman?
Commissioner Begaman, present.
Commissioner Mersky?
Commissioner Mersky, present.
Commissioner Papantonis?
Commissioner Papantonis, present.
And Commissioner Armrod?
Commissioner Armrod, present.
And we have Inland Wetland Director and Enforcement Officer Jamie Frederick.
I'm sorry.
And Inland Wetland Associate Katie Planchet?
Present.
Okay, so we have, uh, six commissioners present this evening. We have a quorum. And we'll proceed. All commissioners seated are able to vote. Any commissioner need to recuse themselves from any of the items on the agenda this evening?
Uh, this is Commissioner Armrod, um. If item seven E has been continued, then I do not, or has been tabled for the next meeting, I do not need to recuse myself.
Thank you for that affirmation. All right.
Commissioner Papantonis, I just want to say that I was not present at the last meeting, but I did, um, watch the video of it and am prepared to continue with deliberations on Gould Lane.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, comment.
This is Commissioner Mersky. The same status as, uh, Commissioner Papantonis applies to me. I also reviewed the, uh, the record, the video and the recording and also the minutes as well.
Great. Approval of the minutes is next up on the agenda, May 8th. As noted by staff, regular meeting minutes, um, need to be approved this evening. Is there a motion to proceed on that basis?
This is Commissioner Begaman. I may make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May 8th, 2025 regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Yeah, Commissioner Gokowski, I'll second that. I understand that there was a typo and I didn't hear Jamie where the typo was on the minutes.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland agent, the typo was on the agenda in reference to what?
On the agenda, okay. I second the motion to approve the minutes from the May 8th, 2025 meeting.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any objections?
Commissioner Papantonis, I abstain. I wasn't present.
Okay.
Commissioner Mersky, I also abstain. I was not present.
Moving on, we have one application for review in the Wetland 250501, Eight Orchard Avenue, replacement of a privately owned bridge. And I think there's a staff report that was prepared regarding this. Jamie, you want to bring us up to speed?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland agent, so this application was where we see at the last meeting. Um, I didn't meet with the applicant on site this Tuesday, so I got a very last minute staff report out. Um, I did indicate that I thought the commission might want some more time to review, um, so it was likely this will be continued. Um, I'll just quickly screen share an aerial image of the area and then we have a representative from the applicant team present that can, uh, walk you through what the application is. Um, and I think that's probably the best way to do that. Let's see if I can share the right screen this time. All right, is everyone seeing an aerial image with a pond?
Yes.
Yep.
So, um, this road here is Hotchkiss Grove Road. Um, and Orchard Ave comes off of it. Um, and the subject bridge is, if you look at the pond area, you can kind of see a a straight water course, um, and the bridge crosses over that culvert water course. Uh, while recently the commission had, um, an application for the ponds. Uh, and that is the condominium property just to the north of this pond, just for a little bit of extra context. Um, so with that being shared, I will hand it over to the applicant to give an overview of the project. Paul?
Thank you. Um, I hope you can hear me. My name is Paul Muniz. I'm the chairman of the Solid Waste Management Commission here in Branford. I'm also the past president of the Hotchkiss Grove Shore District. And I'm the current vice president of the Shore District. Um, the Hotchkiss Grove Shore District is responsible for private road maintenance within the dimensions of the district, even on private property. Um, so we have to maintain private roads in our district and private roads within our private district. Um, Orchard Avenue is a privately owned road. Um, and on Orchard Avenue, there is a, a, a bridge, uh, which is about, uh, nine feet long and about 10 feet wide. So it's a small bridge of the size of a couple of pieces of, a couple of sheets of plywood, um, that passes over a drainage water course that empties Talmage's Ice Pond, which was previously privately owned and has now been donated and is donated to the Branford Land Trust, who are the present owners. Um, the bridge provides access to four private residences on the north side of Orchard Avenue. Those residents have an easement, uh, and I take that back. The Hotchkiss Grove Shore District has an easement to provide private road access um, to those four residences. So we have the responsibility um, to provide access, uh, to other parts of town to those residents. There is no other, uh, public or private roadway access to those four residential dwellings. Um, the application was submitted, uh, prior to last, the meeting two weeks ago. It follows an application that was made in 2019, um, which was withdrawn prior to hearing. Um, in 2019, the, the need for bridge repair had been identified, uh, prior to that. Um, but the focus on the application in 2019 was oriented towards replacement of the culvert that drains the pond as opposed to the bridge deck itself. Um, Hotchkiss Grove Shore District has a responsibility to maintain roads, not culverts. There was some resistance to the project, so it was tabled. Um, we've been doing an ongoing, uh, routine structural inspection of the bridge. And we're at the point now where we need to take action to replace the bridge. We've obtained a structural engineer design for replacement of the bridge, which is located within the town of Branford mapped wetlands area. But all of the work will take place within the dimensions of the existing roadway to remove the existing bridge and replace it without touching the existing culvert, which has been inspected by the structural engineer and determined to be in appropriate satisfactory condition. What we will need to do is install new foundations within the dimensions of the roadway to support a new bridge deck and then we'll use precast concrete slabs to span the foundations to create a new bridge. Uh, the application proposes erosion and sedimentation controls. Um, it shows the dimensions of the, uh, proposed construction. Um, it has a sequence of activities that indicate the nature of the construction pathway we hope to pursue. Um, and uh, anticipates a project timeline of about two weeks. Um, I met with, uh, Ms. Frederick earlier this week. Um, and we reviewed the project in person. Um, and a staff report has been prepared, which identifies a couple of, uh, uh, points of interest that I would be able to clarify if you are suitably familiar with the topics that were raised in the staff report. Uh, in addition, the engineering department has reviewed the proposal and identified, uh, several topics, uh, which we can also provide answers to. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have with respect to the staff report, the design or the application, and I would anticipate, uh, providing written responses to the questions raised in the staff report and, uh, assistant town engineers, um, correspondence. But again, if there are any, uh, points that I could help to answer, I would be available to do that right now.
This is Commissioner?
Commissioner Basserman, I, I, just a couple, um, I guess, background questions. Um, the, the road that serves this private road that serves the four residences, is, is that any different than any of the other roads within the Hotchkiss Grove Association that you, uh, maintain?
Well, it's, it's a, at, at this point, it's the only neighborhood in Hotchkiss Grove that has a bridge. Um, it's the, it, at the point of the bridge, it's significantly narrower than all of the other roads in the district. And it's unique in that with the exception of Orchard Avenue, with, with the exception of Orchard Avenue, all of the avenues in Hotchkiss Grove are jointly owned by all of the, by all of the property owners. Um, so you own your property and then you also own all of the roads. But on Orchard Avenue, which was the houses which were built after the original 1920s deed subdivisions. On Orchard Avenue, the property lines extend, um, all the way across what otherwise would have been a jointly owned right of way. So not even to the center of the road. It's kind of a, 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 a jigsaw puzzle of ownership across the full dimension of, of the Orchard Avenue, uh, paved roadway. It's very unique.
To say the least. Yeah. One, one other, I guess, overview question?
Indeed, each deed does carry an easement to the Shore District or to the association for use of the area that serves as the right of way.
Um, one other question. The, the culvert, uh, which seemed to be an issue in 2019, somehow improved over the years?
Now, the, the, um, even in the 2019 application, the, the, even in the 2019 application, the comment on the culvert was that the culvert is in no danger of failing. But I think the, um, the approach in 2019 was to replace the combined culvert and bridge feature with a, with something called a box culvert, which is capable of being driven over. So the idea was remove the culvert, remove the bridge, install a box culvert. You get two for the price of one, but the price of one was more than the board had money to spend and it's stuck in the throat that we were replacing a culvert that we didn't own and had no specific responsibility to replace.
Okay.
So it took seven years of, uh, of, uh, I won't say arm twisting, but education to, um, come up with a uh, a, a means of providing a bridge that was acceptable to the, to the board.
Uh, Mr. Muniz, this is Commissioner Gokowski. How are you this evening?
Very good, thanks.
Um, I'm, I was reviewing the photos that are in the file and, and, and I do have some concerns. Um, I noticed, uh, there's been some questionable replacement of the steel beams and I'm looking at the mortar that is currently around those steel beams. Um, how do they plan on replacing those beams? Because it looks like they're one, they're going to be disturbing all of them.
No, the, the entire, um, the, 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 the bridge, the bridge deck at present consists of beams laid on the, the stone culvert. Right. And then a corrugated steel pan was placed on top of the beams and concrete was poured into the pan. That's the current bridge. We're going to remove that pan and the beams and then further outward from the culvert, we're going to excavate trenches, cast them with reinforced concrete and lay a bridge deck across the new foundation. So it will span larger than the existing uh, bridge and it will be not loaded onto the culvert. So on the right-hand side of the image that Ms. Frederick has shown, um, you can see that the, the, the outer stippled foundations will carry the load from the planks that are shown on the left-hand side of the drawing.
Now, what is the current age of the, uh, the, uh, bridge?
The current age of the bridge?
Yes.
We believe it was built in the 50s or 60s, probably on a weekend.
Okay. For the last of the while.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, my only concern is that interior beam, the?
It's gonna be gone. The beam will be gone. So, so we're, it's, um, can see, yeah, the, the whole bridge deck will be replaced, will be removed and something bigger will be, um, installed essentially over it. Um, I don't have anything, I, I don't have any analogy I can offer you without thinking too hard.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland agent, something we didn't really discuss is how will that existing bridge plate be removed in a way that it's not going to result in anything falling into the water course of the pond?
Good question. Um, uh, there are some photos that you might be able to put up. Uh, the culvert, um, there is some space between the top of the culvert and the bottom of the bridge. We could lay plywood in there to catch any uh, broken pieces as, um, the bridge is being taken apart. Uh, is there any, let's see what else we've got for photos. I think there was a, a, a view of the beam, sec, uh, beam. Yeah, right there, maybe. So we should be able to either put a net or some plywood in there to catch any pieces of concrete that might fall into the culvert. There's also, the culvert is, um, well, that's the culvert, but there's an image, I think it might be draw, uh, photo number 10 that shows what this culvert discharges to. Keep going.
It might be in?
Yeah, that one, that, that one, that, back one, back one.
Okay. Yep.
Right, so the, the cul, so this is the view looking downstream from this little, you know, 10-foot bridge into the, the, actually, the applicant Eight Orchard Ave's property. It's, it's a stone lined water course with, you know, an inch of water in it. If any pieces fell in, we could hand pick them out.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Jamie, would it help to look at the staff report and, and, uh, the questions that I guess were raised as you thought of the staff report? Uh, to kind of, uh, focus our attention here?
Uh, we could potentially do that, or it sounded like Mr. Muniz may have had prepared, maybe prepared some responses for those items. I'm not sure which makes more sense.
I mean, we, I could, um,
Would you help look at the plans while you go over that?
Yeah, I could go through it pretty quickly.
Okay.
So, um, uh, so with respect to the staff report, if, if you each have it handy, um, the, the first portion is the site history. And as I said, you know, we need to replace the failing bridge within the mapped wetlands area. The 2019 application proposed a culvert replacement, but the culvert is not faulty. Uh, the, the bridge is failing. Um, the wa, so I, I don't know what else I can tell you for history. Let's see here. What other? Um, the plan is to work during dry weather, uh, you know, going back to the history. So the plan was to work during. Okay, so we, look at this one. The 2019 application was different. It included drawdown for the culvert. We're not replacing the culvert. Um, so we have no intention of drawing down the water level. Um, and we do, you know, I, I would say we intend to do the work in dry weather. Uh, Ms. Frederick has pointed out that the 2019 photos taken in August show similar water levels. Um, I will say two things. One, we don't intend to, to, to drop the water level. If it is lower, it'd be favorable. Um, I will say I do not know the process that the property owners used to manage the water level, uh, when it was owned by the Eight Orchard Avenue owners. And I don't know what process the Branford Land Trust uses, or if anybody even knows that they can adjust the water level. Um, you know, we can, we could talk to the former owners and find out what the practices are, but, um, you know, we're anticipating. I, I've lived in the neighborhood for, you know, 35 years. I have seen that thing just be a mud puddle. Um, you know, if we were to, uh, see it, you know, if we entered a drought period, we would seek to, um, initiate the work as close to that as possible. Um, the next section of the staff report was on erosion and sedimentation controls. Um, the first bullet was, uh, the request to consider uh, existing vegetation relative to location of proposed erosion measure, erosion control measures, minor revisions may be warranted. We discussed that in the field. Um, and I think, um, if you go to the photos, maybe photo one in the photos?
2025 or 2019?
2019, I think.
Although 2019 won't reflect. Although two thousand nineteen won't reflect current conditions.
Well, is that number one?
Yeah, they're both fairly fairly similar.
Okay, so you can maybe see more of the bank in the in the other one, but the, in the field, we discussed on the right hand side of this image, on the right hand side of the culvert. Sweeping the intended erosion controls to the south and west, more towards the keep going left, right there. So sweeping the erosion controls, which were intended to be along the bank of the culvert, but as we get closer to the bridge itself, sweeping them up into the to the west. Or I'm looking at my notes, we would sweep the east end southward to get closer to the road.
On the site plan, essentially, rather than following it all the way along the culvert or edge of water course, kind of turning it up in parallel to the to the roadway to keep any runoff from the project. More condensed and also to provide less impact to the vegetation, which has been, as you can tell from the difference in photos, been growing in. Not to say that there won't, might not be some vegetation management long term required for
We noticed a fair amount of invasives. I think there was what? Barberry and burning bush, some of which might be cut back.
Barberry, correct.
Uh, but once you get below kind of the branches of some of the the sapling maples that are there, there is pretty good ground access to install hay bales and silt fence. The next bullet was clarification as to the extent of excavation to assess whether erosion control measures would be needed on the pond side of the road. There is minimal area on the pond side of the road. And the in this image, in the center of the image, below the guardrail, there's a dark divot in the road in that shadow. And that is the northern edge of this bridge deck. So, you know, a foot and a half, two feet west of where the cursor is right now down the road. Yeah, right about there. That that is where the foundation trench would be excavated and all of the work takes place within the dimensions of the roadway itself. You know, we could install silt fence on the, you know, the maybe two foot wide slope between the roadbed and the bank of the pond during construction. On the, so that's the north side of the bridge on the pond side, on the south side of the bridge on the pond side. I don't know that we have an image. We we could install silt fence, but it's it's heavily vegetated. The edge of the the edge of the bridge deck in this image is right, yeah, right there.
This is Commissioner Bastman. And and again, how is the material of the existing deck being removed?
Probably with a jackhammer. Or a, you know, an excavator, backhoe bucket, just lifting the thing up. It was a, as I said, it was a pan, corrugated steel pan laid on top of the the bridge, uh, laid on top of the beams. So it it would probably come out in pretty big pieces. There will be some little pieces of rubble.
Again, yeah, again, given given the nature of a jackhammer and how close the the pond is to the road. Um, it would seem to me that the the larger pieces that could be removed at one time would eliminate some concern about the sedimentation and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, if we can, um, if it'll come out with putting the backhoe bucket on the on the deck and lifting it in as few pieces as possible, that's a, that's everyone's goal. But again, the water in the culvert is is inches deep. We can hand pick out whatever we need to. The water in the pond, you know, surprisingly, it's really only like a foot deep. There are places in the pond where it's deeper, you know, uh, I think I'm sure one of my neighbor's kids and maybe one of my kids has fallen through ice skating and, you know, it's scary, but it's it's, you know, knee deep. Next bullet is will there be any onsite stockpiling? There will be some stockpiling of of, you know, the the planks and some other construction materials, but the the stockpiling area will be in the driveway parking area on the north side of the bridge. Which is a pretty good sized area. We had probably four or five cars parked in there the other day.
Is that noted on the plan?
No. We we could show that.
And the material excavated for the the new footings would be removed from site?
Yep, that the, I mean, the concrete is going to come right up to grade, so uh, yeah, any materials would go on that paved driveway and then would be removed from the site. Equipment and materials will also be in that same driveway. Uh, the next bullet is 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 relatively important. There's a question about clarification on the remove existing CMU walls on the demolition plan. Let's see if you have it. I know I have an image I could show. And that's good, so there, there's also, it's also shown in the two not, two thousand nineteen drawing. But so the 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 design plans, yeah. So the design plans call for removal of the excuse me, removal of the, on the drawing. While I take a step back, on the notes for the demolition says carefully demolish the existing concrete slab, the metal deck and the steel beams. Which is shown in the drawing. The drawing also shows remove existing CMU walls. The CMU walls are non-structural and really are only serving as wing walls for the, or, you know, they're installed as wing walls. They probably functioned as curbs when they were initially built. What the note should have said on the drawing is remove the existing CMU walls to the extent necessary for construction. We don't really need to remove those CMU walls other than where they have any conflict with the dimension of the of the foundation trenches to be excavated. To the extent that that any CMU wall is removed, that volume of concrete block will be replaced with cast in place concrete volume, so it it's a non-structural feature. It won't mod- removal of any portion of the CMU wall won't affect the, you know, wing wall or curb function, because it is going to be replaced volume for volume with cast in place concrete. The last sub-bullet is to consider any potential conflicts with the sewer line, which is a legitimate concern. There is a sanitary sewer manhole in Orchard Avenue south of the bridge. That this, that manhole directs flow. Uh, let's see, what direction is that? It it from that manhole, the the line travels east into the Eight Orchard Avenue property. If you were to go to two thousand nineteen, figure ten, I think.
Yeah, I think it's marked out.
Keep going. One more. Yeah, so that's facing north. So it flows down the hill to that manhole, you know, opposite to the direction the man is walking. And then it flows west under the road. Keep going. So that, so that, yeah, keep going. I think it was photo ten on the nineteen.
It's also shown on the kind of.
Yeah, you can see it. Oh, so it it travels south of the culvert into private property. It does not intersect with the intended placement of the foundation trench on the south side of the bridge. We do not have the invert elevation of the sewer line in either manhole. Which we can get. I don't know that we need it, though. The the interaction of the sewer line with the intended foundation trench is such that the foundation trench will extend below grade either to a depth below the frost line or a depth at which it encounters bedrock, which is present you know, right in that area. You saw it in some of the images that where we saw the where we were looking at where we would install the erosion control materials on the south and west side of the proposed project. There was a bedrock ledge visible right at grade. So the found, the foundation on the south side, the trench will be excavated either to frost depth or to bedrock, at which point that, you know, the the foundation will be cast on a on a bearing feature. The concern is, so we will not be on top of the sewer line. We will be next to or near the sewer line. It, I'm gonna say at least a foot away from it. Maybe more, depending on the actual, you know, location of the the sewer line, once we open up the street to see, to see what we've got. The you know, if the bottom of the foundation extends lower than the sewer pipe, there will be no horizontal load on the sewer pipe. If the bottom of the foundation is higher than the elevation of the sewer pipe, there's a potential for a horizontal load onto the sewer pipe. In that case, we would according to the design drawing, the bottom of the excavation would be filled with crushed stone to distribute that load further and take the load off of the sewer pipe. In addition, not shown on the drawing, there's the crushed stone. Not shown on the drawing or the plans in consultation with the engineer. If we go to the sheet number two, this is sheet number three. If we go to sheet number two, on the, say, on the right hand side, the south foundation, which shows proximity to the sewer line, which is that manhole with the lines coming out of it. The western side of that southern foundation could be tapered instead of being two feet, six inches wide. It could be narrowed down to as thin as I'm gonna say twenty inches. I had it written down. So we could taper taper the shape of that southern foundation to increase the distance from that, you know, that corner point of the foundation. Increase the distance from the corner point of the foundation to the sanitary line. It's a good question and we have a couple of different solutions that we could provide. The the selection of the solution, if it turns out to be a problem in the field, would probably need to be determined in the field based on the actual position of the sewer line.
This is Commissioner Bastman. Jamie, has the town engineer looked at this particular aspect of the project and made comment?
The engineering department has reviewed and provided a comment, which I did not get in the Dropbox today, but um, I was CC'd on. Uh, and in the comments pertaining by and large to this concern that we're talking about right now. Um, and then there are also some comments about me ensuring that the flows are not changing and and that blood status will not change.
This is, this is Mr. Muniz. I did obtain uh, comments from Jennifer Aquino in the engineering department today at three o'clock. Um, and she did address this same topic with respect to proximity to the sewer line. I spoke with the engineer about it after I received the comments and those are the options that are suitable responses. So we could taper the taper the shape of the foundation on the south side to increase the distance from the sewer line. It could go down to twenty inches, possibly even sixteen inches of width in that corner to in, to meaningfully increase um, the separation between the foundation and the sewer line. And alternatively, we can clarify the the depth, the final depth of the foundation, once we learn the the burial depth of the pipe. Uh, the last two areas of staff comments with respect to stormwater. Will there be any changes in stormwater management with respect to existing road drainage sheet flows on the on the east side of the so, so uh, stormwater drainage flow only comes from the south side of the bridge, which is higher elevation than the north side. On the east side of the, south side of the bridge, um, the camber of Orchard Avenue is oriented to the east. So water flows across the road, sheet flows onto landscaped property south of the pond. On the west side of the south side of the road, um, in this image, it'd be on the left-hand side of the drawing. Oh, wait a minute, no, on this image, it'd be, yeah, on the left-hand side of the drawing. I'm sorry, be the right-hand side of the drawing. Uh, and the upper part of the image above the, that stone guard, uh, wooden guard rail. There is some flow um, uh, on that side of the, the crown of the road that runs down a gutter. The gutter ends before the bridge and kind of right where the cursor is. It's eroding a divot in the roadway, similar to the divot that's in the foreground. Eroding the, the bank on the west side of the bridge. Um, we did not propose any measures uh, for erosion control on that side of the bridge. But after looking at it in the field, the suggestion that we would include would be to add a modified riprap pad, probably similar to a DOT M703 detail, which is four to six inch riprap uh, pad to slow down um, the discharge along that curb line uh, into the vegetated uh, side of the culvert. Um, well, the, the water course is not a culvert at that point. Uh, the vegetated side of the water course downstream of the culvert. We don't have any intention of increasing curb from where the curb stops now to bring water across the bridge and down into the landscaped property, uh, which you can't see in this image, but on the right-hand side of the photo. Um, you know, that would be changing kind of the water budget for the area. It seems to have always entered the water course on the south side of the bridge. Um, but it has been eroding, so we want to control that erosion long-term. Excuse me, with um, you know, something like a four-foot by five-foot uh, riprap pad applied to the slope um, on the vegetated side of that water course. Um, and the suggestion was that we show those on the site plans and, and we can do that. We will do that. The last area of consideration was landscaping. Uh, will there be, will there be any impact to existing vegetation uh, caused by the erosion control measures? Um, I would say it would only be temporary. As I pointed out, they're, they're below the first level of branches on the non-invasives. There's, you know, a couple of feet of um, clearance that we could install. Silk fence and hay bales on the, you know, that south and west side of the, of the bridge. That's really the most sensitive uh, wetland portion of a construction. Um, and then we offered uh, to provide wetland seed mix after, you know, construction is complete. We can, we can include a, a specification for the mix that we would obtain, if, if that's something we need to do.
Jamie Frederick, I think it's something the commission typically likes to see, with the understanding that it could always be swapped out for something comparable.
Okay. And if you have a preference for, for, you know, this environment, you know, uh, publish somewhere, we'd be happy to use it. And the last question was, if required on the pond side of the roadway, will measures to ensure stabilization until an establishment of vegetation be required? You know, again, if we went to um, one of the photos, the, the only thing we can really do there is silk fence or hay bales. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of room to, to, to um, work.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, so for the commission's um, benefit, would you be excavating the entire width of the, the road to be putting in the footing, or is the footing not as wide as the pavement?
The footing is gonna be as wide as the final bridge deck. Uh, so the design calls for 14 feet of width. Um, you know, I, after being in the field the other day, I checked on the typical width of fire apparatus, which is eight to 10 feet. We conceivably would modify the design to go down to a 12-foot width, so we have a little more room to work with within the roadway without threatening uh, wetlands on either side. Um, you know, a, a 12-foot road as a, a 12-foot bridge, uh, instead of a 14-foot bridge would still be adequate for fire apparatus. But, you know, we would, we, we want to excavate the, the least width necessary. And then the planks would be six feet instead of seven feet times two.
Mr. Muniz, Commissioner Goklowski again. So you're, you're, you're telling us that you're not gonna be excavating like wh- where the manhole cover is. You're gonna be excavating in front of that manhole cover for the length of the bridge and, and the sides. And you're gonna be replacing that surface with the tar again?
Yes, yep. So where the manhole cover is uh, in this view, in front of it, by, you know, a couple of feet, two feet, we would excavate a 14-foot or a 12-foot, where the application is for 14 feet. If we reduce it down to 12 feet, it might be better for you. Um, uh, width, left, right, 12 to 14 feet. And then 10 feet from that trench, we would excavate another trench. I mean, at this point, the bridge deck is only like front to back eight feet. The new bridge deck will be 10 feet. So the, the two trenches will be uh, uh, spanned by these concrete planks. You know, not much bigger than, again, than sheet supply would, that will be fastened on to the foundations. And the culvert, the culvert will never be touched.
Okay, Commissioner Goklowski again. Um, and I know this sounds like a silly question, but did you ask the engineering company, what is the lifespan of this new bridge that you're putting up? Did they give you an estimation?
I, I, I don't, no, that was not a design question.
And it, the current, the current width of the road is currently what? It's?
It's uh, uh, probably uh, 14 and a half or 15 feet.
Oh, it's, it's, it's all right. So you're basically, you're asking us to replace the existing surface that's already there. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can see where it's eroding and falling apart in the drawing. It's bulging and falling apart. That's gotta be replaced.
Right, so you're looking to, you're looking to replace the existing area. Um, my point of contention is, I wouldn't want to shrink it for the simple fact that a fire apparatus, we have some big fire trucks. I mean, I don't, I don't want to second guess them missing the uh, you know, the road and going into the culvert, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there, there was a pretty big forest fire back there a few years ago.
This is Commissioner Bassman. So I guess with the questions that were raised, either in the staff reports certainly addressed uh, in the uh, communication this evening, I think there's a number of takeaways that um, uh, need to get incorporated, I guess, into some revised site plans. It would seem to me that this is um, uh, is gonna be worked on over the next couple of weeks and brought back at our next regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes. I mean, I, we, I will provide written answers to the questions, will modify the drawings. Are there any um, responses that I've provided that would seem to be unsatisfactory in terms of our current approach or what might be a modified approach?
This is.
By any of the commissioners?
Commissioner Begaman, I have two, two questions. Is there gonna be a different type of guard rail? And how will it be affixed to the ground? Will that require excavation? And the second question? Go ahead.
We, we didn't plan to replace the guard rails.
Okay.
There's, there's not a problem with the guard rails.
Okay. Um, and then Commissioner Begaman again, just for, for Jamie, I, I don't remember doing a road over a bridge. And in terms of the water runoff from the road, do we, do we feel that the gutter and the riprap, it, it sounds like it's on one side of the bridge and not the other. I don't, I just have questions about road runoff going right into the water area.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So I mean, I, this is definitely unique in the sense that it's an existing condition that they're looking to repair. Um, so there certainly is some runoff that will go over the bridge and does go over the bridge, which is, which is evident from the fact that it's eroding at the corners of the existing plate. However, on, on the left side of the road in this picture, um, a decent amount of the drainage does seem to appear to go through this vegetated area towards the pond. And then on the other side, um, it cuts off right before it. I think there's a curb and it ends shortly before the bridge. And it kind of hops off where that curb ends. And there's a vegetated area there, however, it is kind of steep. And it does look like it's starting to erode. So that's where, there was some talk about adding some riprap to help slow dis- or dissipate that energy uh, and prevent further erosion before it ultimately would get to the water course. So that's where the stormwater questions came from. And yeah, I, I, I think the fact that there's still a little bit sheet flow going over the edge of the road um, is arguably acceptable in the sense that that's what the existing condition is.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bassman. To follow up on that point, however, you know, stormwater is one thing. Do we salt the roads in the wintertime uh, for, for snow purposes?
That road is, even though we own the road, um, it is plowed by the town.
And so if the town is salting roads, they could be distributing?
Yep. Yeah, no- nothing is different. I mean, you know, did it affect the steel beams? Probably, but um, you know, it is uh, again, that's in the interest of public safety to, to have a passable road for emergency vehicles. I, I would also add, um, you know, to the extent that we can see erosion in the foreground of this image. And I don't know if it, I don't know if that's part of the bridge or, but that the.
The concrete wall.
That looks like it's past the bridge, but.
Yeah, I think that's where the concrete wing wall is.
Yeah, I think um, you know, but once there's cracks in that pavement, whether it, uh, you, the, the erosion is not necessarily due to curb flow. In some cases, once the pavement cracks and you get water in there and freeze and thaw, that could be, could have contributed to the uh, disintegration of the um, bituminous concrete surface. Um, even without uh, you know, um, transient flow.
Commissioner Bassman, any other comments from the commission uh, for Mr. Muniz to uh, consider as he revises the plans?
All right. Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, real quick, I just want to point out, um, I, I, I think you, you touched on everything and addressed it for the most part. I just really want to stress that I am concerned about stability on, on this side of the, the, while the replacement is being done, especially because you will be digging down and you're not really gonna have much soil between where your foundation is and the pond. So I don't know if the pressure from the pond is gonna just blast through what's left of, you know, that, that bank, and then you're gonna have the pond in your footing. So those are, that's what I want to see.
We talked about that, I, I, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, it's fine.
So this is Mr. Muniz. The um, we talked about that with the engineer this week. And, you know, in terms of means and methods for construction, um, you know, a segmented excavation of the trench would be possible so that if we started on that side or finished on that side, um, as opposed to digging the full length of the trench with to, uh, you know, curb to curb, um, you could uh, install a uh, I call it flowable fill controlled low-strength material, which is concrete without aggregate, which is very low permeability. Um, the first, you know, equivalent of a shaft depth on that side of the road could be excavated to the target depth, um, filled with the low-strength material, which is impermeable. And uh, you know, left, uh, it cures in the, in a matter of hours. Um, and then left in place for the remainder of the trench excavation on the, you know, on the continuing side of the trench, then go back. And it, again, it's controlled low-strength material. It's able to be broken back up with a backhoe bucket. Um, so you could dig it back out and, and finish the concrete pour.
This is Commissioner Begaman. Just another question, when they're paving the new asphalt or what, every, it's gonna be cold. Um, how do they keep it from going past the sides and those little bits that you see when they're, when they're paving?
When, when they pave, they, uh, on uh, a lot of times they will use two-by-fours and, and build a small form and then pave within the box of the two-by-four.
This is Commissioner Begaman. Jamie, does that need to be specified on the plans about how they pave it, or is it?
I, I, I don't think it would be unreasonable if you think that it should be.
So yeah, I have a note that says prevent uh, uh, bituminous concrete pavement from entering the water course.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Goklowski, one quick question. Did you say concrete roadway, or are you gonna use uh, tar substance, uh, Mr. Muniz?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna use asphalt.
Asphalt, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You all set, Jamie?
I am. Um, continuing this, the June 12th meeting?
Please.
Thank you for addressing the questions this evening, and hopefully uh, we can um, review this at our next meeting and move forward.
I appreciate your consideration and your time. Thank you. And I will thank all the commission members for your volunteer service. I, I do the same thing, and I know that it's a demand on your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have the deliberations for 250101, 1937 Ghul Lane, proposed subdivision for three residential lots. Um, as noted on the agenda, um, the hearing uh, was conducted for this item, and the hearing uh, was closed on March 27th. Uh, was closed on March twenty seventh of this year, all the material and testimony for consideration. Has been submitted, no new information or testimony may be added for the purposes of these deliberations. Commissioners that are seated for the application are required to be fair and independent, not predisposed to any outcome, the commission must decide. Uh, the merit of the application from the effects that are in this record and from their own personal observation and technical expertise. And permit decisions must be decided within uh timeframes specified by our regulations and the Connecticut statutes. Staff report has been prepared to assist in identifying key elements of this application, we kind of discussed that at our last meeting. This report, however, should be considered a guide document. Uh, subject to any additions, changes, or deletions as we deliberate this evening. You want to add anything to that, Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, um, yeah, so I did. Per discussion at the last meeting, I did um, come up with some conditions based on the discussions during the public hearings. Um, for the commission to consider, um. There might be some additional language in there, uh, in the sense that it, it's part of our standard. Language that we would use in that type of instance, so I think, you know, checking the language to see that the full language is what. The commission would be looking for, if you do decide to. Move forward with any of those con- conditions would be appropriate. Um, I do have one other condition that wasn't necessarily specifically brought up at the public hearing that I would. Probably throw out if the commission's looking to um, move forward with uh potentially issuing a permit, um. And yeah, so I don't know. Do you want to start off with kind of thoughts and reflections on, on where the commission is? Um, I want to dive right into what the conditions I drafted up are. Or if anyone needs a refresher to look at the site plans.
This is uh, this is Commissioner Vassman, a rather substantive. Um, staff report.
So I have. A staff report that I prepared for the last meeting and then I have the draft conditions for consideration, so. On the staff report, um, that's in the file, there is text in red, which the applicant team did respond to. Um, at the last meeting, um. So I just wanted to point that out in case anyone's looking at that document, um.
Are we okay and? I guess, right, did anybody have any? Questions upon reviewing the staff report that we want to address before we go through it as we typically do? You know, item by item.
This is Commissioner Mersky, um, this might be from, um, this might be for Jamie, actually, I, I, I think we talked. There was some conversation in a past meeting about the, um, I think this would be in subsection B that's on page three. Um, the issue of the eighty-five percent uh survival rate with plants or greater, is that a standard? Percentage that's used for the commission typically, or I, I don't recall if that was asked in the past or not.
Oh yeah, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, so the eighty-five percent is standard per the regulations. Um, so section. Seven point ten, I think. Yeah, seven point ten of the regulations outlines. Um, kind of the monitoring requirements for when mitigation is required and the commission typically defaults to those same standards. When mitigation is proposed, especially when it's proposed immediately adjacent to a wetland where there's kind of, you know, higher stakes if it's not successful. Um, so the, the default. Um, is eighty-five percent or better survival rate of planted well and compensation vegetation and monitoring. And controlled invasive species are the two kind of general default success standards the commission looks for. Sometimes there will be additional things. Um, added based on the specific details of an application.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we start with the staff report, uh, Jamie, and? See what headway we can make?
I'm not sure, I, just for clarification, what's the date on the document you're referring to?
Uh, let's see, uh, is there a date on this?
Or maybe there is no date. No, there is no date, okay. Then I know what you're talking about. Let's screen share and confirm. All right, is this the document you're looking, you're looking at?
Yes, yes.
So. Start at the top and go to the bottom, real quick highlight, um, the commission either has to make a decision this evening or request an extension or schedule a special meeting. So just kind of keep that in the back of your head and we'll revisit it if it becomes necessary, um, so. Tried to order these kind of in the order that it would be relevant to the permit holder. Um, the first one being that final lot development plan shall be submitted to the inland office. For review by the duly authorized agent for compliance with this permit. If there will be any onsite stockpiling, location and sediment erosion control measures shall be shown on the site plan. If final building design requires a footing drain, footing drain outlet location and outlet protection. Shall be shown on the site plan for review by a duly authorized agent. And C, at the discretion of the agency or its duly authorized agent, deviation from the subdivision plans. Will require a new permit for lot development from the agency, so that would be if. There's an increase in impervious area that requires a change in stormwater management, if there's an increase in the lawn area. Um, things like that, if the footing drain is shown within the existing like lawn area and it had energy dissipator. I wouldn't say that that kicks into one C, um, which is why I specifically called that out. Um, and same with the stockpiling, because stockpiling is fairly typical for development and assuming it's within. The active area of construction and is properly protected, I don't think that's a need for a new application, it's just a best management. Um, policy, if you will, um, any questions on one? Two, for each of the three building lots, contact the inland wetlands department to request inspection slash site meetings for the following. Or should be deleted, for the following. Oh, I guess not, for the following. Nah, no, for the following, can be combined at request. Pre-construction meeting prior to land clearing, clearing limits shall be marked in the field by the surveyor. Initial clearing, erosion control inspection prior to land disturbance. Location shall be marked in the field by the surveyor prior to install. Pre-con, pre-meeting, oh, sorry, pre-planting meeting, planting inspection and final inspection. Um, and it can be. So sometimes pre-construction and erosion control will be at the same time, um, and or maybe. If multiple lots are being constructed by the same person, they might want to do lots one and two at the same time or something like that, so. That's what I mean by can be combined at request. Any questions there?
No.
Three, appropriate precaution, this was in response to comments and discussion um at the public hearing. Appropriate precautions should be taken when removing the abandoned car from proposed lot three to ensure there is no impact to the underlying soils and watershed. If any evidence of a spill is observed, the owners should contact C T D Emergency Response and Spill Prevention. To ensure that proper corrective actions are taken.
This is Commissioner Mersky, just one uh small question, I, I know that this issue was addressed, like you said, previously by a resident. Um, is the idea that if something, is it just that if something is observed that they should contact? Um, deep or is it the, is the concern a little larger, the idea that the cars, the vehicle has been there such a long time that? There could be a concern about the, the soil. That could not be visible, or is there just, we don't have, we don't have any say in the matter and that is just a question about whether something is visible or not?
Yeah, I mean, certainly there could be something in the soil that is not visible and. Um, you know, I would encourage the property owner to, to, to. Investigate, I, I think it might be a stretch of the. Agency's jurisdiction to require them to, um, you know, I mean, they could have removed the car before. This application, we would have never known there, we don't, we don't. Really regulate the removal of. Junk cars, if you will. So I, I think this is my way of trying to compromise and, and understand that there could be a potential. Um, you know, for an impact and so, you know, just to kind of put it on the. Property owner's radar and hopefully. You know, they've, they'll, they'll do what they, they will with that and, and. Expand that into consideration of how, how they're going through removing.
Oh, that was helpful, thank you.
Item four.
Uh, so this was discussed with the applicant, um, notice shall be placed on the deed for each of the three proposed building lots. Addressing the jurisdiction of the I W W A. The notice shall indicate that the lot development is subject to this permit and that future approvals may be required for future activities. Including what not limited to vegetation removal, grading, drainage, modifications, construction or placement of. Elected improvements. B, a copy of the proposed language shall be submitted for review by the duly authorized agent prior to filing on the land records and then C. A copy of the deed documenting compliance with this condition shall be submitted upon filing the deed, the initial deed. For the lot with the town clerk's office, and this was discussed in part because there's um. Sign notification proposed on the site, which is in my mind always a good thing, um, because. Hard to say you didn't know when there's a sign there, however, the signs are fairly close to the wetlands, um, and there's lots of areas. Uh, not behind those signs that would also fall within. Essentially the jurisdiction of the inland and water courses agency, so. Um, I think it's important to make sure that property owners are aware of that. Um, any questions?
No. This is Commissioner Vassman, Jamie, just for clarification, so on the deed for the property itself. There will be a section on the deed indicating um, uh, the, the issue that we're addressing here?
Correct, yep, it's just a notification, a statement on the deed, um. Which hopefully everyone's reading whenever they purchase property. Um, and it, you know, it carry forward with every future deed as. Um, something that pertains to the parcel. Number five, prior to start of site work, a bond shall be submitted to cover the completion of items outlined in condition number. Condition number six, which is the next condition, and maintenance of all project erosion and sedimentation controls. The permit holder may submit a single bond to cover the whole subdivision or three separate bonds split by work associated with each building lot. No work shall occur on a lot for which a bond has not been submitted. And so six is the, the uh mitigation or enhancement plantings, if you will. So this is one of the places where there was definitely talk about having a bond for the mitigation or enhancement areas. We didn't necessarily specifically talk about the bond including erosion control measures. Um, so if anyone thinks that, um, that requires revision, make sure you let us know. Um, going into the subsections, uh, the permit holder shall submit an itemized estimate to the I W agent. Of the cost to bond these items for the agent's review and approval.
This is Commissioner Vassman, what? What would be the? Uh, I don't know, are, are we better served, do we think, with separate bonds or a single bond? Give me the pros and cons of that.
So, um, first of all. When we were talking about the bond, the, the applicant did request if they could submit three separate bonds, so there's um. The interest from the applicant, but. Also from my vantage point with compliance, it's helpful to have three separate bonds if it's gonna be, if the three lots are gonna be developed independently. Because then I don't have to play, well, lot one did this, so now we're pulling the bond, and then I don't know who is ultimately gonna be responsible. So it holds, uh, you know, the, the appropriate individual party responsible. And uh, in this particular case, it's very easy to hold each party responsible because there's no overlap. In grading or drainage between any of the three lots, each lot is its own island, if you will, there's nothing shared. From one lot to the other.
So I, I agree with all of that, so then why? Why the offer of a single bond?
Um. Cause I didn't want it required to be three separate bonds, but we can, so uh, we could just say. I think it's just because of how the wording came to me, um.
I, I mean, given past experiences and things that go bump in the night, wouldn't we want?
Though we could say.
More leverage, more control than l- less.
Prior to start of site work, a bond shall be submitted. Prior to start of site work. On any lot. Si- site work on a lot. A bond shall be submitted to cover the completion of items outlined in condition number six and maintenance of sediment and erosion controls. For that subject.
Water. Yeah, so, yep.
Lot, yeah.
This is Commissioner Goklowski, wouldn't separate bonds be a lot easier in the future when an applicant is looking for? Um, a release of a bond, um, if certain, if the um. Criteria of the bond has been satisfied under the bond requirements or under the.
In this particular setup, I, I think it works really well because there's nothing connected on a subdivision where there's shared infrastructure. It get, I, I'm not sure how that would work, um, but that's not what's before the commission right now, so we do not need to have that conversation. Um. So I think, I think it's now repetitive, prior to start of site work, prior to start of. Site work on a lot, a bond shall be submitted to cover the completion of the items outlined in condition number six and maintenance of project and. Project erosion and sedimentation controls for that subject lot. I don't think we should, I mean. Does anyone feel it's necessary to keep this last sentence?
No. Nope.
Reiterates the first part.
Right.
This is Commissioner Mersky, I just had a question of clarification, um, I saw, I also, well, one, a comment and a question, sorry, I agree with the three bonds, it seems. Overly obvious to me that that would be beneficial to the commission um for enforcement, but um. In reflecting in one other example, without getting into that example, when a bond was, uh, with bond discussion was brought up on another application, there was. Not just, there was different types of bonds, I know you, it says here erosion and sedimentation controls, but I, couldn't it be clarified or perhaps I? Um, misunderstood, is there, is this the only kind of bond that we need per subdivision? Cause I recall we had some other example where there was, there was a bond for erosion and then there was. Wasn't there a bond for plantings or am I incorrect about that?
That's condition number six, so we haven't gotten, um.
I, okay.
To say to cover completion of. Uh. Wetland enhancement items, just so that way there's context as to what it is, since you haven't read it yet, wetland enhancement. Items outlined in condition number six and maintenance of all project erosion and sedimentation controls. Does that make a little bit more sense?
Yeah, I think it's just the orientation, the fact that it's separated, I mean, if that's the intention, as long as it's not confusing to the applicant. It, 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 it looks like it's not, but based on your explanation, I understand.
Yeah, so I did kind of restructure this because when I, when I first started drafting this condition. Um, because the commission did kind of, did revise. The regulations, I want to say, oh my gosh, I can't keep track of time anymore. I revised the bond regulations and then also we've kind of changed our packs, our practice based on experiences. So this condition turned into a, a whole page condition, so I broke it up into two separate pieces and I had. The section that's six before five, because you kind of need to understand six to understand five, but to the comment of trying to. Put things in the order that they're relevant to implementation, I put. Five before six, so we could also look at switching those two conditions if it, it might help out. Five before six. So we could also look at switching those two conditions if it, it might help out.
I'm just recognizing. There may be other individuals that are, might read it and if there's, if there's any concern that there could be confusion, misinterpretation.
Well, it's helpful to know that it's confusing to you because. This permit runs with the land, so anyone. You know, could inherit this permit and we wanna make sure that everyone can understand it.
Thinking a landowner generally permit, I mean, generally deeds and documents recorded. They tend to be not intentionally confusing, but from a legal standpoint, they ju- can be. And. It's just, if you want people to comply, if you're, if we're ever concerned about. Uh, violations, whether intentional or unintentional. I imagine it's, that's a real possibility. That's just for consideration.
Okay.
All right. So I don't remember. Oh yeah. So I just went over the itemization. That has to be approved. The bond will remain in place until the wetland scientist. Or landscape. Architect. Has doc, submitted documentation that the standards outline in section 10 of the regulations have been achieved for five years. Or the life of the permit, whichever occurs first. And D, a request to release the erosion control portion of the bond may be submitted to the agency in writing after site work is complete. And the site condition is stabilized. I'm just realizing that that is a little bit confusing.
B is confusing? Oh, C.
The, the bond will reme- remain in place until, and then it's, it's saying, but you can, so I feel like this should kind of highlight the bond. Items. Retaining. To condition. Six will remain in place. Uh, so that kind of distinguishes everything aside from the erosion control measures. And again, we have a right condition six, so we can always go back if anyone has concerns after we've read condition six. All right. So on to condition six, installation and maintenance of the wetland enhancement areas shown on sheets. E S one dated five, one, twenty, twenty-five and L P one dated four, thirty, twenty, twenty-five. Will be consistent with section seven, ten of the wetland regulations of the town of Bramford, which includes. Plantings per the approved plan, wetland scientist or landscape architect must approve. Any changes of species and shall notify. The wetland department of changes in writing prior to purchase and planting. Emails preferred. B, the submission of reports.
Jamie, do we normally call ourselves wetland department? Don't we, don't we say the agent or, you know? That, that's kind of a new term, no?
I think I copied and pasted it, but yeah, we can put wetland office if you'd prefer. I, I do, I do feel it usually is office, so I'm not sure. We could say wetland office or the duly authorized agent. Do you have?
Duly authorized agent is what we usually say, right?
I think it's the most, um. Appropriate. Okay. B, the submission of reports from a wetland scientist or landscape architect at six months, one year and annually thereafter for a period of no less than five years. After planting. That document eighty-five percent or greater survival rate of planted vegetation. And monitoring of in control of invasive species. And then C, placards per the approved plan. Wetland signs are available for purchase in the inland wetland office currently at five dollars apiece. Or alternatively, uh, signs can be approved by the per consistency. Duly authorized. Agent prior to installation, if they have their own sign that they wanna use. Um, any questions? Seven, for each development lot, a licensed surveyor shall identify in the field layout. In the field layout of site components, including but not limited to clearing limits, erosion controls. Stormwater system components, buildings, access drive and parking areas. And cuts and fills for site grading. After completion of lot development and as built. Property slash boundary survey must be submitted to the inland wetland. I W agent or. Duly authorized. Let's go back and standardize our language. Uh, send it to the duly authorized agent for the subject lot. Prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. So I added subject lot to our part, our standard language to. Indicate that this can be independently for each lot. Um, in addition to the items listed in the standards for surveys and maps in the state of Connecticut, the property boundary survey shall also depict the location of wetlands. Location of split rail fence and placards, final grading and location of stormwater structures with. Invert elevations. A qualified P E or landscape surveyor shall certify that the grading and stormwater system. On site is consistent with this approval. And then we got the standard conditions and general provisions and issuance of all permits. And while we're on the topic of digesting information, um. The additional. Condition I thought should be considered is in regards to the stormwater management, um. Infiltration testing was. That there was, um. Testing regarding infiltration rates, however, the documents, uh, indicate that there shall be final infiltration testing. Um, prior to installation of the systems. So, um, I would recommend the commission consider a condition that says for each building lot findings from the additional infiltration rate. Testing to be conducted by the. Hydrology study report. Revised April twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-five shall be submitted to the agency to affirm that rates comply with this approval. Prior to installation of the stormwater management system, just to confirm that. What they said will work on site, in fact, will work on site and that we're good to go moving forward. Should it not? Be what it, it was said to be, then. That kicks them back to condition one where. They have to change their site plan to, uh, kind of establish compliance with regulations. Any questions on that one?
This is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, I do have a question. I guess on item two. And I may be overthinking this. Item two B. Basically says, uh, you know, before, um. Before. Construction, I guess, of the building itself. Um. Foundation or anything, you're gonna have an initial erosion control inspection. Am I right on the timing?
Prior to any, any land disturbance, that would be essentially grubbing. Um, or it could, grubbing is kind of the first step. So I don't necessarily require it prior to cutting as long as we've done. The pre-construction meeting and have. Reviewed the limits of disturbance.
Meet again. The way I read this until they're ready to plant.
So that's why I have item B as initial erosion control inspection and. So they don't necessarily have to contact us for subsequent erosion control inspections. We'll routinely periodically go out during construction. Um, but they don't have to necessarily contact, they don't contact us to schedule those. We kind of try and like to surprise them, so. We can see what they're doing on a regular day rather than on a, hey, we're coming by day.
Yeah, I, I guess. What I'm trying to anticipate. And we've seen this when we have multiple lots being developed. Where, you know, you start out with a plan as well intentioned as it may be and with all of the appropriate, uh. You know, professional, uh, uh, experts, uh, and then it doesn't work. The way it was designed to work. Um. And, and, and the only way that we pick that up, I guess, is by those inspections. The onus is on us.
Um. Yeah. So, so I would, I would say yes, um, with the understanding that. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget to paste that, um. Generally speaking, yes. I mean, so we do have a contractor's acknowledgement form as referencing permit condition number. Standard condition D. Um, which basically is the person that's developing the site acknowledging, I've reviewed the permit. Or reviewed the plans. I understand what I need to do. So they're certifying essentially that they're gonna do what. The permit says they're gonna do. So, I mean, we're counting on them to do that. Uh, yeah.
But I'm saying, let's say the plan didn't work.
So. I, I think this particular development is a little bit unique from.
The subdivision?
Some of the problem sites we, we see, uh, not to say it won't necessarily have its own problems, um. But in the sense that each of the three lots are fully encompassed with their own control measures. And that there's nothing that spans, so nobody's gonna be taking down a silk fence sale. Well, I had to grade these two lots together. That's not a problem. Um, there's no steep slopes, so we don't have, and. Excuse me. And generally speaking, the. Area that would be draining towards any of the erosion controls is not. That large that it shouldn't overly stress. The erosion control measures. So. I guess what I'm getting at is if there's gonna be a failure of the control measures that I've, I've, I'm reviewing here in the plans. Is not gonna likely be something that happens overnight. It's gonna be something. That results from lack of. Um.
Okay.
And, and inspections. So like ideally staff will be going out and seeing it and be able, be able to follow up with them. Before it becomes a problem.
Over time, you're telling me.
Preemptively.
Okay. All right. I overthought it.
I'm also, if you wanna give me a minute, usually, and I don't recall specifically for this site plan, but usually. In the details, there's a note that basically says, I think, yes, it is in here. Additional. Temporary erosion control measures shall be installed as required by the zoning enforcement officer and or wetlands enforcement officer. So if we're not satisfied with the measures for any reason, we can require that they. Um, address that.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from the commission on, on additions, uh, or changes to the material we just reviewed? Given the silence, is there a, uh, motion in the wings regarding twenty-five oh, one oh one? Nineteen thirty-seven Ghulane. Uh, let's see, I'll make a motion, this is Commissioner Bassman, I'll make a motion that the commission approve inland wetland twenty-five.
Peter, I can't, I can't hear you. I don't know if anyone else can.
Oh, did I hit a button here?
I hear you now. Maybe it's cause you weren't looking at your.
Okay. This is Commissioner Bassman. I make a motion that we approve inland wetland twenty-five oh, one oh one nineteen thirty-seven Ghulane. Uh, uh, for. Uh, three residential lots. Uh, we have reviewed a staff report that I guess I will date this evening. Uh, May twenty-second, twenty-five. Uh, items were possible consideration, one through. And did we number that one number eight, uh, uh, Jamie, that you added?
I was complicated and I made it number six.
Oh, yai, yai.
You could say as words, wordsmith, um, at the meeting and I, cause I've made a couple of edits. Um, and I have this document. Saved. That one we say.
Okay, so. I, I make a motion that we approve inland wetland twenty-five oh, one oh one, address nineteen thirty-seven Ghulane, three residential lots. Uh, with the conditions specified on a staff report dated May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, possible conditions for consideration, one through. Seven?
One through eight.
One through eight. That's what I thought it was. One through eight, including the standard conditions and the general provisions in the issuance of all permits. End of story.
Commissioner Goklowski, I second that motion.
Any further discussion on inland wetland twenty-five oh, one oh one? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Goklowski.
Commissioner Goklowski, aye.
Commissioner Armrod.
Commissioner Armrod, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Uh, let's see, I'm listening, Commissioner Mersky.
Commissioner Mersky, aye.
Commissioner Begaman.
Commissioner Begaman.
Commissioner Begaman, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. Okay. We'll move on. We have other business. Kilometer review, five oh nine, five forty-five East Main Street, also known as five twenty-five East Main Street. And six twelve Business Park, uh, determination as to whether a permit is required. I believe that the staff. Uh, put a pager in the, um. In our, uh, material for this evening to kind of capture her thoughts. Jamie, you wanna expand on that?
Uh, yeah, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So I'll give a brief overview and then hand it over for a presentation and any. Clarifications that might wanna be offered. Um, essentially there's been an ongoing drainage issue along a shared property line between the two subject properties. Um. And they're looking to address that. Uh, six twelve Business Park received a permit from the inland wetland agency, I wanna say in two thousand and four-ish. Um, and then subsequent revised approval in two thousand and fourteen. And the subject area kind of, uh, it, it, it changed from that original approval to revised approval. And the revised approval doesn't have a whole lot of details on what that area was. To look like or did look like, specifically did look like, um. And so I think they're look, they, they are looking to correct that. My concern for the commission is, and I'm gonna show this G I S map real quick. To show everyone where we're at. Um. All right. So we've got five oh nine, five forty-five East Main Street and six twelve Business Park. Uh, there is a wetland to the east. There is a stormwater basin which was, um, identified in the plans as a wet, wetland creation area to the west. Um, the area. Um, of concern is to the, in between the two properties to the rear of the parking lot. Um, it is greater than a hundred feet from this pond, this stormwater pond. It is greater from a hundred, than a hundred feet from this pond and is greater than a hundred feet from this water course. The concern being, potential concern being. That the swale directs water to a culvert, which ties in directly to the stormwater system. There we go. So I'm just gonna show you the latest plan real quick. So on this latest plan for six twelve Business Park, um, where is the call out? Well, you can see this. This, uh, feature between the two property lines that. Maybe I'll defer and let somebody that has been looking at this more regularly. Maybe I'll defer and let somebody that has been looking at this more regularly. Find the call out, so I'm not seeing it. But it drains to this inlet structure which connects directly to the. Um, stormwater system without going through the pond. And out to this water course. In between I ninety-five and um these properties on Bus- Business Park Drive. There have been some concerns raised generally about the conveyance of water through this water course. So the main difference is that originally it was a grass swale, but changed to a. Stone, um. Culvert type feature and is now being proposed to have a paved swell. So infiltration and storage capacity would be the two concerns, and relating back to my memo. Going directly to the regulations, um, the agency may rule that any activity that alters the existing rate. Or quality of any stormwater discharge can be to a regulated area. Or upwind review area is likely to impact or affect wetlands or watercourses and is a regulated activity, so. That's what I'm asking the commission to consider, obviously, there's a whole slide of. Sliding scale of what could fall under this and basically asking you to determine if you think this subject activity falls under that. Or not, so. Um, I would hand it over, and do you want to be able to screen share, or do you want me to screen share?
Uh, Jamie, are you, are you talking to me?
Uh, to you and or your team.
Um, Mr. Trinkus is going to be discussing his plan in detail and the regulations. Uh, I was not planning on sharing screen, he may be though.
Okay.
Uh, yes, Jamie, I I would, this Steve Trinkas, I would like to share my screen.
Okay, you should be able to.
Okay.
I just request that whatever you share, if it's not already been submitted to us, just make sure we get a copy of it.
Yeah, no, thi- this plan uh is not. Correct, yeah, um, so, S- Steve Trinkas, I'm a licensed professional engineer in Connecticut. Um, and and working on the mobile home site, the. Uh, the the primary issue uh is, is that when the medical building site was developed in two thousand three, two thousand four. Um, there was a drainage ditch where, as Jamie pointed out, there's a culvert that diagonally goes through the. Uh, medical building site and then connects to the drainage system on Business Park Drive, to the west of that. Was a wetland area, and the wetland area was actually the low point on the property. Um, when this medical building site was developed, they put the culvert where the ditch was. Uh, assuming that that's where all the water went, uh, but the water from the mobile home park actually drained, not only to that ditch, but also. Further west and then drained south through the open wetland area. Um, when the medical building was uh built, the grade was raised five to six feet along the common property line. And basically, the uh, the inlet of the box culvert is. Uh, the water can't get there from the mobile home park, um, I went out with a licensed land surveyor. And we took uh a a lot of field shots uh along the fence line going into the mobile home park. Um, contour lines shown here are tenth of a foot interval, so basically, there's an inch and an eighth between every one of these lines. And basically, th- the what we call the microtopography is the water from the west where my cursor is now. Simply cannot drain along the fence line and get into uh the inlet of the uh uh the existing culvert. On the Business Park Drive site, so the original approved swale was actually a stone swale, it was, it was just a level. Uh, path of modified riprap which has a high resistance to flow. But it doesn't really convey flow because it's got such a high degree of uh roughness, so we propose here is a. Uh, zoom into the section is basically, we have the fence line here on the right. Is a little uh, you know, uh, earth berm, six inches in height and about two foot wide. And then basically, a a just a a paved level area. Um, so that the runoff from the mobile home park will uh run from the uh north to the south. And then be able to hit this swale, and the swale again will be twenty-four inches wide, you know, of patuminous concrete. But this, the, what we did is we made a, we had just enough pitch to go from the western end. Up to the inlet of the box culvert at one percent pitch. Um, this is a hundred and fifty foot w- long run, and there's literally just about one and a half feet. Um, so, with the pavement, water will run on a smooth surface. Um, the berm is there to basically keep it, you know, onto the paved surface. So the runoff that comes from the mobile home park will hit that flat paved thing, but the paved path will have a slope from the west. Running to the east to the inlet of the culvert, we also have a little section, um, just kind of opposite the culvert. It would convey the water going from the east to the west and then, you know, directly into the culvert. And this will prevent the ponding and flooding on the mobile home uh property as it will allow. You know, the the natural flow of water across their lawn areas, cause there is no drainage on the site. To then enter, you know, the the culvert and go on its merry way. Um, historically, as I said before, it used to simply flow into that wetland area, um, there is a map. In the hub. Land records of the medical building site where there's spot elevations that actually show the. The low grade is more on the western end, not where the culvert was installed. Um, if the culvert had been installed to the western side of the site. You know, the water would have been able to freely drain in it, so we're just designing a system to allow that water to get into that culvert and. You know, continue flowing to the south as it historically did prior to the medical building uh being constructed.
This Commissioner Bassman, do we have hydrology data to show what exists in? Uh, what this plan would uh would change in terms of the hydrology characteristics? Given the low pitch, uh, the six inch burn and and then hundred year storm, what happens?
It it, no, we we don't have hydrology, but if you look at the town GIS, you will see that. The uh, this mobile home park and the one that's to the east of it. That eastern mobile home park grades down onto this site and then it dr- drains. You know, all the way down here to the this western um end, uh, you know, where I'm zooming into now. And what has happened because uh it cannot get to that culvert. This area um can get, the soils will get saturated, um. And ultimately, if when soils are very saturated, when you get a lot of rain, then flooding actually occurs on the mobile home park. Um, you know, around some of the units and even up to, you know, uh, up to the first roadway. Um, so there's no change in the amount of water going here, we're just giving it a path. Would a hundred year storm e- be conveyed through here, the answer simply is, no, it wouldn't, but. Um, you know, because that's a a tremendous amount of water, and I don't believe the box culvert here is only a thirty-six. Inch by thirty inch culvert, I don't believe that would have enough capacity to handle the hundred year runoff from. The the drainage area that goes to this point, you know, we're not increasing the flows here, we're just giving. You know, a a path for the water to get, you know, off the mobile home park and go through the box culvert. Um, whereas in the past, before it was, the Business Park site was developed, it simply flowed. You know, to the south over the property line through a wetland area. So there's, there is no change in that, you know, I I would also point out that, you know, based on rainfall records, um. Cause I I do a lot of stuff with low impact development, you know, we're still seeing, eh, you know, even with some of the larger storms we've had in the past few years. You know, eighty to eighty-five percent of all annual rainfall events are one inch or less in twenty-four hours. And that's based on rainfall records, um, you know, I mean, yes, we had a storm where I live in Southbury last August, they dropped. Ten and a half inches of rain in eleven hours. Um, and the the storm was so far off the charts, you could never even design anything, and that caused failures of. All kinds of systems, including those that were designed, you know, for hundred year storms. Um, so in a hundred year event, there, it would likely still be flooding on the mobile home park because. You know, the swale would have a limited amount of capacity to direct the water, you know, to the culvert. So we're just giving it, we're giving it a place to go now, where it simply can't get there today.
Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent, there there appears to be in the records, uh. Various revisions to the drainage feature. Located in that general area, basically the drainage feature that runs parallel to this property line. Um, I don't believe that we received a revised drainage. calculation or drainage report for each of those revised plans that are in the file, um.
I have done only this one plan, which.
The other plans are 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 other thirties.
Yeah, from the medical, from the medical.
And I don't think we have anything newer than twenty fourteen, with the exception of this plan, um. So. I mean, I I have observed there is definitely a problem with standing water in that area, um. But given that it directly connects to the system and discharges to the water course. And that we've received generally as the town, some concerns regarding the drainage. Capacity of that water course, I thought I should bring it to the commission. Um.
Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, what what are our choices here?
Your choices are to say, yes, this falls within the purview of our jurisdiction and you need to submit an application. And then I think you need to clarify what level of information that you'd be looking for with that application. Or you could say, no, this is outside the one hundred foot upwind review area. Well, it's a modification to the drainage, uh, you know, we see that you're. Addressing, I I, a- an existing drainage issue and based on, you know, some of those comments about. The restrictions of the structure to convey. A certain amount of water, be more than a certain amount of water at a certain rate. Maybe you find that that information is acceptable to say that this is not your jurisdiction, um, and that this is a correction of. A drainage issue that has been ongoing, um. But essentially, I'm asking you to make a jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Ruling right now. Um, and I do see that you have a hand raised, Chairman.
Yes, sir, you would like to make comment?
Uh, yes, so for the record, my name is Edward Shankle, I'm the attorney for five oh nine Brantford LLC. Uh, the owner of the mobile home park, five twenty-five East Main, uh, Mr. Trinkas. Uh, is the engineer also retained by our client with mutual client, I just wanted to add a couple minutes of background and some context here. Um, the parties being, the parties being, uh, the. Owner of the mobile home park and the owner of the medical building have actually been litigation for about three and a half years, and I'm pleased to inform. The commission that we reached a a mutual resolution uh to this, and one of the components is. That the mobile home park is going to uh implement and and pay for. Uh, this this plan that Trinkas came up with that is going to resolve the problem. And I only, I only add that, the context, because the parties, um, it's been a long journey for both, both property owners. And to the extent that we could, um, and we're we're looking for a path of least resistance. Uh, to get this all resolved, because it's such a long journey to both parties, I understand that the commission has a jurisdictional determination to make. Um, I I've I've read the regulated activity in um, in the regs, which is in a memo. And I do not think that this plan would fall under any of the four regulated activities. Um, number one, it's not within a hundred feet of a of of a wetland or water course. Um, and number two and four, for the reasons Mr. Trinkas provided, it's not likely to impact the water course. And number three, uh, the agency may extend the upwind review to the top of the slope. If steep slopes or erodible soils are present, I don't think that's applicable. So, I I I think that if you look at all four of the regular activities, I I I think that. It it this doesn't fall within the jurisdiction, the commission, the permit is not required, now, if the commission does make a determination. That a permit for regular regulated activity is required, we would request. Only minimal mapping requirements, if any, if we could submit the, the Mr. Trinkas' plan with GIS mapping. Uh, that would be, that that would make both property owners very happy, so. My client doesn't have to go through the time expense of any type of extensive mapping or site plan. Because quite frankly, if there's gonna be an extensive mapping requirement, that's gonna be of significant expense to my client, that may be cost prohibitive, and we wanna. Get this all resolved, but at the same time, uh, my my client's very conscious of the cost. So I just thought I'd add the background, the context, and my my opinion, and reading the regulations. And obviously, any technical questions should be filled in by Mr. Trinkas.
Thank you for that, uh, this Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, do we agree that there would be no impact with this plan on the water course?
Uh. Jamie Frederick and the Wintland Agent, I mean, I I honestly don't know that I can, I can speak to to that, uh, I'm not a. Professional engineer, I have not studied this area, so, so, to backtrack and get to what my concerns. Were and why I'm asking the commission to look at this instead of just making the call myself, it's in part because of, like I said, the concerns that have been raised historically. Um, and I think that it it require, it 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 should be reviewed by the commission in that sense. Um, and then in regards to. So, so again, the the main concern would be the conveyance of stormwater to a water course in this particular case. And it, the the this. Proposal is essentially a modification. To a drainage feature that was originally approved as part of the development of six twelve Business Park. Arguably, it is a modification. Because the original feature which has been modified over time is not working. As intended perhaps, um, so to that end. You know, I don't know how it relates calculation wise, cause, um. I'll quickly share what the original approved plan for six to twelve Business Park was. I'm gonna just steal the screen share real quick, um. So as you can see on the original plan, there was a clearly defined swale going into this culvert area. And on the most recently received plan for the subject site. We just have this stone, oh, here it is, stone culvert feature along the shared property line with no elevation, so. There's very minimum information on what this actually is and how it functions and how it relates to what the original approval was. So I guess my thoughts for the commission are. To consider the context of the problem, the context of the concerns for wetlands and water courses. And whether or not you think that this rises to a level that it requires your review, or if it's yet another. Kind of modification of the the feat, existing feature that may not require review by the agency. I I, there's no right or wrong answer here, um. I think it's, I think it's in an area where the commission can make a judgment call, um.
This Commissioner Bassman, I guess that the the concern I have is, what what we have is a plan. And some words. You know, we we don't typically. Make these kinds of decisions without some current data. Um, on which to basis to say, yes, there is conveyance, or no, the conveyance is minimal. And the plan would seem to address that, I I don't know that at this stage of the game. Um, so to sit here and say that, you know, there's. There's, there's evidence that would suggest that it's not impacting the water course, I I I can't see that. I can't say that, I don't know one way or the other.
Uh, thi- this is Commissioner Guklowski, I'm also a little confused, um, uh, Attorney Shankle, you represent. The mobile home park, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes, I'm sure.
Um, we're the property owners from. Um, we're the property owners from Business Park.
Ah, I'm glad you asked that question. Um, so Attorney Deacon, who represents Business Park. Um, he has been copied in all the emails leading up to this hearing. And he was supposed to attend, but he had a conflict, I guess, last second. He had to be out of state. Uh, he authorized me and Mr. Trinkus to proceed without him.
Okay, my 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 question is, so. What you're telling us is that the. Issues between you, your client and Business Park, um. They're saying that your property caused the fault of this situation, is that correct?
No, um.
Okay.
My 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 client was the plaintiff in the lawsuit. My client filed the lawsuit against Business Park owner, um, claiming. That 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 the Business Park property caused the uh, the issue, um, you know. Counsel for Business Park is not here, I'll just say that they had some defenses and they had some other uh. Arguments to make, it never went to trial, we we resolved this with a settlement. And that led us to here to understand what's the next step. To getting this this plan implemented.
Right, so my 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 question is. And what I'm concerned about, so you're pleading the case. For the property that is, has created the situation that you're currently in, is that correct?
Uh, I I represent the 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 plaintiff, uh, which was the Mobile Home Park in that in in that matter, yes.
Right, so your your client has been. I hate to use the word harmed, but harmed because of the actions of Business Park. Is that correct?
That's what we alleged in the lawsuit, yes.
I don't know how much we want to get into, you know.
I I I.
That's not the purview of the commission, that's not what we're here for.
Well, what it is, is the property owner who caused the caused the situation is not present at the meeting.
They were, they were also notified. They have the the opportunity to be here, I'm sure that the commission requires a permit. They will be here when the application is submitted or have some sort of representation. But they had the ability, they were aware this was on the agenda, I think it's appropriate for the commission to move forward and and. Make a decision as to whether or not, I didn't receive any correspondence saying please table this. I cannot make it, so I think it's very appropriate for the commission to move forward with this request and make a determination.
Commissioner Mersky, you have the head raised?
Thank, uh, thank you, I I had a few questions. One may be for Jamie, it might be for different people, so I apologize, um, can I? I understand there's a lawsuit here, let me just clear this, I mean, we should really should not get into the too much into the lawsuit, it's gonna go down a rabbit hole, that's. Just not ideal for us, but like, is there a condition in this lawsuit that you had to come to this commission? As a, is a, is a condition to try to resolve this, i- is it by choice or was that a condition of of a court order, I just wanted to clarify.
It wasn't a, it wasn't a condition and there's no court order, this is a settlement reached without a court order. Um, as part of the resolution, as part of the settlement that is, it was reached by the parties. Uh, my client, the Mobile Home Park. Agreed to pay for the cost of an engineering plan that resolved the problem. We we are here today because we want to understand whether a permit is required. To move forward with implementing that plan. Or if the next step is submitting a permit, which we hope is not the case, but if it is the case, we hope that there's minimal mapping requirements. Required, so that's kind of what brought.
Yeah, you did say some of that before, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify the part about whether a court ordered you to do something, that's that's. But it sounds like the answer now, so. You came to this, it came to the commission, it's, I would just. So if someone comes to the commission, and I apologize, I'm a little newer here at this commission, but typically. You would, uh, you would fill out an application, cuz you know, Commissioner Basserman is mentioning that we don't have a lot in front of us here and to make this determination. And so, isn't it correct, Jamie, that there's information missing potentially? We could make the argument that information is missing in order to make a full determina- I'm not saying we shouldn't make a determination. I have an interpretation of what I saw on the screen, but I'm trying to recognize that, given my profession. I'm trying to separate myself slightly and recognize that maybe we should have more information in front of us to. Adequately make that determination, recognizing that we, I don't think we have a time limit right now, cuz we are missing, we don't have an application.
So, yeah, Jamie Frederick and the Wentland Agent, um, I had discussed that I thought an application might be appropriate. Um, however, I I see room for argument. Either way, um, which is why I'm asking the commission to make the determination. Um, and then if an application. Um, so so he- here's, I guess, my thought is. Ideally, there should be enough information here for you to determine whether or not you have jurisdiction, and if not. Then it sounds like you're probably leaning towards wanting an application, so. Um, in regards to what information would be required, so I didn't want to make the parties have to. Get information that the commission may or may not have required, um, so.
Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, the 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 comment was, um. You know, see if we could do something on the mi- on the mapping side, d- do we have decent G I S data in this area?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Steve Trinkus, if I can share my screen, I have. The G I S with topo of our site, and I think it'll answer a a a lot of the questions that we're. Uh, discussing.
Before you do that, let me see if I already have. G I S with topo in the record, I do, so let me screen share that so that we have.
Okay, yeah, you can, that'd be fine, Jamie, if you, I can talk about it. Um, well, yeah, actually, we want. What I have goes out, goes all the way up to East Main Street and shows the eastern property. With topography and that's, that's really.
All right, if you want to screen share yours, if you can just email it to me.
Yeah, I can, you can email it after the fact, but let me. See if this will come up correctly. Um, so this is, um. You know, the G I S map, and you can see the big area of, you know, cyan shading, that's the Mobile Home Site. These are the contours and you can see to the site to the east of this. The co- you know, the the water is running from the right-hand side of the, you know, image. You know, going to the west down this steep slope onto, you know, our client's property. And then it kind of traverses in a southwesterly direction and there's this one heavy contour here. This is the low spot, you know, on the site. And the actual original low spot according to your G I S was actually on the business, uh. Park side of the the property line. The culvert that was installed was installed right about here, but. The on mapping this part of the land use record for the Business Home Park, uh, the Business Park site. The the there's spot elevations that actually show this corner down here is the lowest spot. Um, and so what happens is this is, you know, the, none of the grading's been changed here, so this. Water historically from both Mobile Home Parks, you know, came through the site to the, basically the southwest corner of it. And prior to the medical building being built, simply drained right across the wetlands area. And likely into a field inlet under Business Park Drive, which then headed, you know, south to that water course by ninety-five. So, you know, there is no change in drainage area, all this water currently goes there. The issue is is that is the low point is not where that culvert is. The water has to pond up, you know, over a foot and a half deep before. Water on top of that foot and a half can actually drain by gravity to that culvert. And, you know, this this paved swale will, you know, eliminate that ponding, because when water drains at this low point. Then it will find the swale which will have a one percent pitch. Going to the inlet of the box covered, basically giving it a place to go. But all this water historically did go, you know, through the drainage system under Business Park Drive. And on down, you know, to the water course by ninety-five. There's, there's no increase in drainage area, there's no increase in flows. It's just, you know, we're providing a, a a a direction for the water to go. The original stone swale that was proposed by Business Park Drive. Was basically a bed of riprap, it wasn't a swale, a swale has a, you know, generally, it's, you know, a parabolic shape. Or trapezoidal shape with a slope on it, the plans do not show any slope, so they're basically. Putting, uh, you know, I don't know whether it was a two or four foot wide bed of stone. On, you know, splitting the property line along the fence and basically. You know, the stone wasn't doing anything because there was no slope from the western end. To the eastern side to get the water there, so.
And and the date of this G I S is what?
This, this came, I got this, uh, from your G I S staff, uh, within either. You within a year and a half.
Plan agent, but the contours, I believe, are from twenty-six, the le- derived from twenty sixteen LiDAR. But, um, there wouldn't have been significant great changes since.
No, yeah, this.
So, to me, uh, from a drainage comparison standpoint. In consideration of whether or not we need, we would need more information, um. It's kind of, for me, the thought process is, is that the drainage feature that is being altered is the drainage feature along the shared property line. Essentially. Based on the approvals issued for six to twelve Business Park, it appeared that there was a feature that was supposed to capture the water from the. The rear or the north side of Business Park. Behind the parking and the building and convey it to this structure, um. And that feature. Is not, it is not a swale, it is not defined with. And granted, in the the last plan the commission saw, that feature was not really well defined there either. Um, but I think to that end, it 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 speaks to the fact that there may be some outstanding information regarding this low point. But from my vantage point, um, it should be capturing. Any of storm water coming off of six twelve Business Park. And getting it into that feature and not allowing for it to pond and span over the property line. It shouldn't necessarily be capturing additional storm water from five. Twenty-five East Main Street, that wasn't part of the original design. And I don't think that's what they're trying to do with this plan, but I think the outstanding question the commission may have is whether or not. That is. Um. You know, a problem or not. And I see again that. You got a hand raised.
Yes.
If I may, uh, just just a point, just a point of clarification. Um, the two thousand fourteen plan that Jenny brought up, it's my understanding. Um, that that plan was in connection to a proposed addition. Uh, either an addition in a parking lot, parking area, or just an additional parking area, which, which was never built. So as I understand it, that was per- they got the permit, the Business Park Drive got the permit in two thousand fourteen, but it was never built. There was a swale plan denoted on a two, it was either two thousand three or two thousand four. In connection to the construction of the medical building. Um, I actually was not able to obtain that from Town Hall, I don't know why it wasn't there. But it was on record and deep, um, and that exists. But from, based on my research, and I think Mr. Trinkus's research, I think he'll confirm as well. The purpose of the culvert and the swale actually originally was, in fact, at least in part. To accommodate the storm water runoff from the Mobile Home Park, it's just, it's it's just not functioning. So I just thought I'd clarify that.
Yeah, and the reason it doesn't function is from the western end of the Mobile Home Park, heading up to where the box cover was installed. Um, over the existing lawn, it it goes, the the stone bed that was proposed on the plan goes uphill. So the stone bed that was originally proposed as part of the medical building. Would never convey water because it's going uphill. You know, and so therefore it just sat, the slope on the medical building, uh, the medical site. Uh, between the parking lot and the Mobile Home Park, you know, it's a, I believe, a two to one, maybe three to one graded slope, it's heavily vegetated. The parking lot has a curb, so there's really no water from that slope that is coming this way. What happens is the rainfall that comes from the, you know, Mobile Home Park to the east and the subject property. You know, drains this low point and there is no place for it to go. If if, when the medical building was built, um. I think if the engineers had looked at the spot elevations that they had in the field, they would have put the box culvert. At the western property line, because that was the natural low point, it wasn't where the ditch was. It was where the wetlands was, and if that culvert had been put there. Quite honestly, we wouldn't have this discussion at all, because the water would have not had a natural flow path to go there. That that's pretty much what happened. You know, it, the drainage structure was not put at the low point of, based upon elevation.
And one more thing to add to, and Mr. Trinkus can, um, add on to this as well, ju- just so the commission, uh, is clear. Um, you know, Mr. Trinkus is talking about how. This won't, this plan will not increase the flow and won't won't affect the water course. Mi- Mr. Trinkus has been involved with both these properties for a long time, I think four or five years, uh, it's not. As if he was just retained six months or a year ago, he has thoroughly, thoroughly looked at this, he has dug very, very deep into town records and deep records. He's been down to the site a number of times, he's reviewed, um, video, uh, scoping of of the, uh, culvert. So I just thought I'd also mention that, that, um, Mr. Trinkus is offering his opinion that it's not negatively going to impact. The the water course based on years and years of looking at this.
Appreciate that, I guess I'm, I'm at the same point I was previously, the more the discussion occurs, the more it seems that there's plenty of sins in the past. Uh, but from my standpoint, it's unclear as to what the impact is gonna be on the water course. I think I'm okay using the G I S data, but, uh, I'll put my vote in that we need an application.
This is Commissioner.
All have to chime in now.
This is Commissioner Begamon, and I was. Uh, just going to say also, it's time to decide whether this is a jurisdictional. Wh- whether we have jurisdiction and. Um, I know. Mr. Schenkel said that, talked about the hundred foot. Distance, but we can go past a hundred foot if we think it a, it a, it can affect a water course and putting a bituminous. Swale can change temperature of water, et cetera, so there are, and there's a lot of details to this application, um. So I I think an application is warranted.
This Commissioner Papantonis, I think an application is warranted.
This Commissioner Mersky, I think an application is also warranted.
This Commissioner Gukowski, I think an application is warranted.
Jamie Frederick and the Wentland Agent, in addition to discussion regarding, um. The G I S, it's, I didn't hear anyone's, um, contradict the statement about G I S being acceptable mapping. Uh, platform for the application, uh, I also heard earlier in the night discussions about stormwater calculations. Um. I don't know. Uh, I guess the question is, are you looking for stormwater calculation information or any sort of. Broker information addressing that topic, I don't know. I mean, you can't really do. Analysis without a full site plan and elevations and everything, so.
The reason I raised it is, is I I think we typically have. Details on the water, especially if we're talking about water conveyance. To the extent that there's statements that can be put into the record. So that we have something on the basis of the water movement, the water quality. Uh, et cetera, that is, um, on the record so that we can make a decision. Uh, I I think that's where where my head is at, as opposed to the absence of any information like that. You know, here we are, uh, an inland wetland, uh, agency. Uh, without any quote data on which we can say, yes, we observed this. Uh, information and we made the decision that we did.
Jamie Frederick and the Wentland Agent, um, I could go through, so I don't think we have any. I can double check, I can look, I can double check whether we have any stormwater information for. The East Main Street site, I don't think we do, but if we do, I could send that. And then I could look through our files for the latest stormwater report that we have for. Six twelve Business Park, it may not be reflected. Six twelve Business Park, it may not be reflective. Um, to the, to the point made that the addition was never constructed. It might not reflect the actual site conditions. Um, but it would give perhaps some more context for the engineer to respond to. How their project does or does not impact those stormwater conditions.
Oh, if you're through, Jamie, just a couple of quick comments, one. You know, the Mobile Home Park, except for the parks and their driveways, is pretty much all lawn. The parking lot and the building roof, it, the medical building is all impervious cover. The thermal impacts of that site are a hundred times worse than thermal impacts. Of the runoff coming off the Mobile Home Park, just because of the amount of lawn, um, secondly. The, I reviewed, you know, the land use records, um, you know, for the medical building. And the stormwater report, while it looked at the medical building site, did not consider this off-site area. And how they were going to convey that water, although it should have been, in my professional opinion, and I've done this for forty plus years. Painfully obvious to the design engineers at that time. The, the Mobile Home Park was higher than the medical building site, and then water was going to come down on that site, and they had to make provisions. For the water and those provisions were lacking is what wound up happening, and basically the dam got built. And now the water can't get from the Mobile Home Park further south, that's, that's really what happened here.
So Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so, so it does sound like there is a change from the, the pre-existing condition, but the rationale for the change seems. I think pretty clear, so I think that kind of addressing that change in the application materials is going to be. What the commission's looking to assess, um, so I mean. To the point that it sounds like your opinion is that the wetlands will not be negatively impacted, which would, um, is ideal. I think speaking to. You know, that, that area and what water is expected from that area to be added to the system, it, in gen, kind of in general terms. Um, would be helpful, because there definitely will be more water being conveyed, because that water won't be sitting. On that site, granted, it's sitting in places that is detrimental to unit. Owners, so I mean, it's not to say that this water shouldn't or doesn't need to be addressed. But it is certainly a change to what the commission has approved previously, um. So I think to the point that you can outline that for the commission, that'd be really helpful.
Anything else on this item, Jamie, any other hands raised?
Um, just one more, just so I can be crystal clear, um, on what the commission will require for the application. Would, would it be, um, it would be beneficial for, I think, both me and Mr. Trankis, just to quickly. Recap what, what exactly required, just to confirm there's G I S mapping, uh, statements about how. The, um, the plan will affect the increased flow through the, the covert, is that correct? So.
Yeah, would, would this make sense, uh, Jamie, can you frame a, an email to Mr. Trinkus? As to those things that we think would help in our assessment of, uh, this project? And then if there's conversation, uh, that emanates from that, uh, you know, at least we'll have something on the record. Uh, as to what the, the commission was expecting.
Yeah, I could follow up with an email.
And just to be crystal clear, G I S mapping is acceptable, is that correct?
Yes.
Great.
Um, I assume that this, uh, is something that you're going to want to pull together quickly. Um, so two weeks is our next meeting, is that something?
No, we got an extra week.
Oh, that's right, three weeks, yeah, um. You would expect to be back in, in three weeks.
The commission can't make a determination on an application the night it's for receipt, so the next meeting is. Um, June twelfth, so if you can get it submitted by June eleventh, it could be for review at the June twenty sixth meeting.
Okay, if, if for any reason we, we can't meet that timeline, oh, Jamie, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. You have some enforcement activity, as Jamie previously noted. Items C, D, and E are, uh, tabled, but we have item A and a notice of violation, twenty Victor Hill Road. Removal of vegetation and storage of vegetation in, uh, adjacent to the wetland on what appears to be open space. Jamie, when was the N O V issue?
Well, that's a great question. Um, it was issued a while ago, I, I have, uh, the, the owner responded. Um, within the time frame requested, and, uh, they had already, uh, addressed. Most, if not all of the things that I had asked them to address, and we scheduled the time to, to view the addressing of those matters. Um, so I can give a quick overview of everything, uh, the property owner is on the call, um. I think my recommendation would be that at this point the matter's been resolved, um, but of course I want to let the commission. Take a quick look at things and see if you have any outstanding concerns. Uh, was everyone able to review the notice of violation letter, do you want me to go over it again, or are you kind of? General understanding. I mean, so in the order, I, we're not order, sorry, notice of violation, um, I indicated that there was some. Materials and debris that seemed to be on town open space, uh, those materials were removed. Um, as far as vegetation removal, um, I don't think there's anything outstanding that needs to be addressed. Where I was seeing items near some stunk cabbage, the, the items were removed, I think, early enough in the season that the vegetation was able to fill in. Um, and then the area, um, kind of, if you're looking at the pictures post removal. Um. Where there's still kind of an open space, it looks like it may have been an open space before, looking at the ground conditions, um. And it certainly looks like an upland area to me, um. And it doesn't look like this, the ground is disturbed to the point of being unstable, um, so this is. Looking towards the residential properties, I'm not sure where the property line is, whether this is on open space. I think it's probably on open space property, but I don't know for sure, um, looking at, uh, drainage covert that outlets behind the property. Um, the property owner had indicated while they were on, on site that he was concerned, um. With blockage of flow occasionally due to debris in the water course, I did tell him that. If there was debris blocking flow, he was allowed to remove that material, but I did suggest that it should not be piled up. Um, especially adjacent to the base of trees, because it could promote rot and, um. Deteriorate the condition of those, those trees, um. So this is a water course that outlets to kind of a greater wetland complex area. Um, and I don't think those pictures are too relevant. Here's where, um, you know, it's come cabbage is coming back, I don't know that there's anything that needs to be done, I think it will. Do its thing, um. In regards, and then this is kind of the upland area where I don't, again, I don't think there's any planting required, everything has been pulled out. With the exception of this, which maybe or not have been pulled out, I know the owners seemed, indicated he had some additional things he wanted to pull out. And then I took this picture just because the property owner did mention that, um, there was some utility work. Last year, I believe he said, you know, that earlier this year, I don't recall. Um, and that the utility was back there doing some vegetation removal as well. Um, which certainly seemed like the case when I looked up and down the utility line, um.
This Commissioner asked me, Jamie, was the removal of the vegetation mostly invasives, or you don't know?
You know, honestly, I'm not entirely sure what the extent of removal of vegetation was, and I didn't really get into that too much with the property owner, based on what I was seeing. Um, I wasn't seeing any, like, like, looking at this, the ground looks stable, there's still, um, undergrowth. Or ground cover, um, leaf litter hasn't been disturbed. To me, I, I don't think it's in an unacceptable condition. Um, especially if it's, you know, left alone to, to do what it's gonna do. Um, and for the most part, I mean, there were some invasives out there, but in the immediate area that was impacted, I wasn't seeing them, so I'm. Mildly optimistic that it won't infill with invasives, um, knock on wood for me. Um, but yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't look. Um, to me, like, there's further.
Right.
Activity that needs to occur, um, the property owners are now kind of more aware of that open space. Um, and I, I believe the property owner had indicated he is interested in getting a survey done, so he has a better understanding of where that property line is. Um, we had talked about some future projects, which I think we will keep in. In the, he knows he needs to talk with me category rather than dragging it out for everyone this evening, um. But that's kind of the long and short of what I have, I don't know if you want to hear from the property owner before having commission discussion. On, you know, his response and his understanding of the notice of violation.
Sure, I think, you know, he's hung in there for better than two hours at this point. Property owner, uh, you have the floor, if you want it.
Yeah, he looks like he's still here, Ryan, if you're still around.
Yeah, you gotta unmute.
John, mute.
Does he know he's muted?
I think he's trying to figure it out, I'm asking him to unmute, so, no. Are you getting a, uh, an inquiry, uh, a request to unmute?
I, I see.
I see he's trying.
I, I see a video and I see a Ryan D. Well.
Um, well, if we don't get to talk with Ryan. Uh, maybe the commission can start your discussion of if you think this is resolved, and Ryan, if there's anything that. You think is important to share with the commission, maybe you can, uh, throw it in the chat. Um, otherwise, I'll follow up with you after the meeting. Or you can try calling in, if you have a, a phone near you, you can try calling the number on the, um. Although it looks like you have a phone, or your device. While he tries to figure it out, does the commission want to?
Yeah, Jamie, you, you, you seem to indicate that, at least in the letter of the N O V, the items that were posted have been addressed. The condition of the site looks to be stable, um, there's correspondence between you, uh, and, and the property owner. Um, our options are to, uh, say, um, continue the N O V. Or to close it up.
Right. Um, Ryan has said, I'm sorry.
Did any commissioner feel that this warrants further work, this item?
This is Commissioner Goklowski, I don't think so at this time.
This is Commissioner Armright, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Goklowski.
This Commissioner Papantonis, I also agree.
Commissioner Mersky, I also agree.
Mr. Begmon as well.
It sounds like we have one less item on our agenda for, uh, next meeting.
Okay, and I will stay in touch with the property owner regarding any potential future projects, and if there's anything I feel needs to come back to the commission. Then you may see him again, hopefully, with a working, uh, uh, working microphone. Um.
Okay. Item B, N O V, one fourteen Clark Avenue regarding regrading. And construction of a retaining wall without a permit from the agency. Take it away, Jamie.
Um. I'm just responding real quick to Ryan, although I think he can hear us, um. Okay, so.
Okay, he, he, he urged it.
Next item, Clark Ave?
Yeah.
Alright, so. Notice of violation went out April twenty eighth, um, I didn't want to rush things, and we had a pretty busy schedule. At our last meeting, so I scheduled it for discussion at this meeting, um, property owner was responsive, uh. Very responsive upon receipt of the notice, contacted me, I believe it was. Uh, you know, a couple of days later, I was out on the site talking about the activity. Um, essentially, a retaining wall was constructed within, I would say, forty feet of the wetland, perhaps a little bit closer. Wetland is located off-site on adjacent property. Um, should have gotten a permit for the retaining wall, so essentially, kind of potentially looking at an after-the-fact application. Um, again, I'm, I'm expecting that commissioners probably. Got a chance to look at the notice of violation and some of the supplemental materials, um. I believe we do, yes, we do have the property owner present, um. It is my understanding that the contractor that did the work for the property owner, um. Is not. Still involved or really easily available to answer questions about how it was constructed, so I did request that the property owner provide what information she could. And we'd have a conversation with the commission, determine what level of information is required. So I did tell her to hold off on submitting an application until this meeting, because I didn't want her to go down one road. To then be directed down a different road by the commission, so, um, she, uh, sounds like she wants to comply with what the commission's asking for. Um, and, you know, which is just waiting for kind of the direction of what it is the commission. Uh, wants to see in regards to this activity. Um, so generally speaking, with after-the-fact construction, there's two options, one is remove and put it back to what it was. And the other is to seek approval for an after, seek after fact approval. Um, I told the property owner that if she's seeking after the fact approval, the commission's definitely going to want to see a planting plan. Especially because there was a planting plan in the subject area as part of the permit to construct the house, um. And. So. I also wanted to know.
The, the retaining wall is just the stone, no mortar?
I will defer to the property owner to answer that question.
Actually, am I there? Oh, no, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay, yes, um, it is mortar and stone.
I'm, I'm looking at the pictures that are submitted.
Or you know, actually.
If it is, it may be mortared, but if it is, it doesn't look like the outside surface.
No, I believe the top of it has some mortar on it.
Yeah, I mean.
Doesn't look like it is.
No, it doesn't, now, now that I go back and reflect, it was just, they just stacked the, the rocks.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in some places it looks, uh, uh, this might be an older wall, some places it looks like there is, and other places it's like there isn't. Specifically, the wall at the bottom. Of the site, um, as you can tell, when I met with the property owner on site, it was raining, um, and it had been raining a decent amount that day. Um, I didn't see any obvious seepage from the wall, um, I will again let the property owners. Speak and clarify and provide more information, but it's my understanding that there. Um, I will again let the property owners speak and clarify and provide more information, but it's my understanding that there's. Ledge, um, in crushed stone behind the wall. Um, so I don't know if the the water is seeping, going down through the crushed stone, hitting ledge and then, you know, falling that ledge. Perhaps underground, so we're not seeing it. I don't know where the water is ultimately going from what I could observe. Um, so I think maybe taking a back step and maybe getting some backstory from the property owner on. Uh, what was done, kind of why it was done and what the drainage and. Um, what the pre-existing vegetation versus current vegetation considered condition is. Um, might be a good place to go next.
Alright, I hired this gentleman because I, um, my neighbor's driveway has a lot of runoff on it, and it would create. Like a, um, it is all ledge back there, there's. And very limited implantings, mostly ferns and plants like that, so. My idea was to level it and create a terrace and then put raised bed gardens in, which I did. And I also wanted to deal with the um, the neighbor's runoff whenever it rained, so he actually dug a trench. Along the very edge of the property and then put a six inch pipe with holes in it. And he said that would divert the water so that it it wouldn't, it would just trickle through, and then he brought in, excuse me. Stony creep gravel. And um, once the the wall was built, he backfilled it with the gravel and therefore. That issue seems to be resolved. I still get a lot of runoff from my neighbor because I can't touch where that is because it's his property. But when it comes onto my property, it's it's, there's no run out, there's no wash or whatever. But it is, it is all ledge, and that's why I wanted to put the raised beds in to at least have an area where I could plant. Because before that, it was just, like I said, pretty much just ferns and, you know, plants that didn't need much soil. And then this ravine where um, the water was running through. And I actually took video after when we had that really heavy rain and walked along the whole bottom edge of the property, and there is no. Um, there is no water coming out from the wall, so it seems to be contained within um, the. The gravel and. And the ledge.
Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent at. I'm sure the stone is, um. Helping with 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 the transport of the water. When the water hits the ledge, though, it's it's not gonna infiltrate through that ledge unless there's a crevice that it finds a fissure. Um, and it's gonna run along that ledge, so I don't know where that lit, I don't know where that drains to, no one does, it's it's underground. So, I. These are definitely, that's definitely one of the hard questions with after the fact activities, especially. Creating activities like retaining walls, um, when there's ledge involved. So I think the questions for the commission. I I I certainly think it falls into the category of something that should get after the fact. Permit, if it's gonna be going, you know, if it's if it's gonna be staying. Um, so then I think the question becomes what level of information is the commission looking for for an application? Uh, do you want an updated survey showing the existing conditions? Do you want a, um. Civil engineer to weigh in on, you know, an assessment of what the the previous conditions were versus the current conditions and. You know, whether there there's any concerns relative to wetlands slash water worth.
You know, and and uh, what's the likelihood that this is gonna. Yeah, to survive, uh, you know, frost eve and and things like that, if it's just a stone piled on on uh, on top of one another. What's the height of the uh, the wall?
Um, it's probably, let's see, oh, probably a little bit over five feet, like five, six.
Uh, so I've looped in the Short Beach zoning enforcement officer and the town building official so that they could. Touch base in regards to any. Any uh, regulations that they may have that are applicable to the project. Ranford zoning does not apply because this is located in Short Beach.
I I guess, you know, after the fact application, um, uh, certainly seems to be warranted, I guess the question is how much. Content is gonna be in that after the fact application, given we don't have the. Construction, uh, the guy that did the construction uh, available to us.
And I I mean, uh, it is very unfortunate, but I ended up, he kept asking me, he came highly recommended by a neighbor. And he had done beautiful work in their yard, so I just. I trusted him, I thought he knew what he was doing, he had worked in the area for a long time in my neighborhood. And so I I I assumed that he knew what he was doing. Um, you know, the wall is beautifully built, but unfortunately, he he gave me a quote and then he kept asking for more money. And I finally looked at him and said, no, you gave me a quote, this is where we are, and he, oh, but this cost me more and. The the, you know, the the gravel cost me more and the, you know, the trucking cost me more, he just kept giving me all these excuses, and then finally I asked him to leave. And we didn't have a contract, which was my bad. I just thought it would be a simple project and, you know, wanted someone who was gonna do a really nice job.
Do I understand, Commissioner Bassman, do I understand this correctly, that the the first layer of stone is on gravel?
Mean on ledge?
Is it directly on ledge?
It's, um, um, and not all of it is on ledge because of the 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 way that the um, the land goes, there, but. A a big portion of it is on ledge. I mean, it would be.
That that detail is gonna be important in the application to know where it's on ledge. Where it's not, what what is essentially the foundation of the wall other than the first layer of stone?
Okay. Well, the foundation of the wall is on, um, it's, that area is is pretty much no ledge. It's it's just dirt and and um, and ground.
So, does the first level just sit on ground?
Yes, yes, there is no ledge there. The ledge is up is up closer to where the flooding was, um. And then it it trickles down, I wish I had pictures.
Frederick in the wetland agent, I didn't throw it in the Dropbox and I can make it available, um. To, you know, the property owner and the commission, uh, in the future, but I'm also gonna pull it up now, because I think it'll be helpful for the conversation. Uh, the site plan from when the house was. Uh, appro- was approved. Um, because it does show on there some ledge, granted, uh, site plans don't always necessarily. Show the full extent of ledge relative to like shallow soil, but it will give a bit of a, I think, um.
This Commissioner Bassman, but I, with the wall, some on ledge and some on, you know.
The the wall is not on ledge, the wall is just on stable ground. Yeah, yes.
Let let me pull up the site plan. Use my ten PM brain to. Get where we need to be. Alright, screen share. So, this is the back of the house. Um, this was the original planting plan. Uh, there was a subsequent planting plan that kind of shifted the plantings over into this area. Um, and the wall is roughly in line, I would say, with the the edge of the garage here. Um, give or take a couple of feet. And then, oh, this doesn't have it on here, um. And then you can see offsite, the approximate wetland delineation from two thousand and nine. Uh, it is my understanding that this property owner is getting a new wetland delineation done, I think, next week. Um, and I can see if, once that information is made available, once that information is made available to me, I would share it with with. Um, this property owner so that that information can be taken into consideration. Uh, I don't know when it will be made available to me, though. Let me think, so there is another one.
I think it's the the plan from, um, the landscaping company.
Yeah, so the landing, the planting plan kind of calls out the ledge area. And you can kind of tell from the fact that there, the planting plan calls out ledge and places for planting that. Depth of soil for planting was considered, you can see that there are a lot of. Ferns and herbaceous things on the plan, but there are also some, uh, you know, small trees and shrubs. Um, and there was the one mature tree to remain, which looks like it's, it probably was removed when the wall was constructed. How many, were there trees removed when the the wall was put in?
Oh, just, um, so, uh, over here where the arborvitae's were, or no, the cedar trees. In the back corner, right here. Because that's where, um, there's steps that go down.
So like there were trees over here that were removed?
Yeah, that that I had planted from the original plan, but then I did put in four, um.
So these were removed and then you put in four.
And then a blue spruce and also a cedar tree.
This tree has been removed, though, right?
No, that's 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 a big tree that's out there, so.
That's still there?
I think it's pretty clear we need an after the fact application.
Okay. So, after the fact application, sounds like you want input from. Perhaps a a PE and a structural engineer in regards to drainage and. Unless that, unless the PE feels qualified to speak to the integrity of the wall, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I I mean, we need something on the record that that speaks to the wall itself, its its basis, its uh. Reliability, uh, those kinds of characteristics, and if we get some professional that can do that, great.
Okay, and then, um, the other question is whether or not a survey is required. So, in regards to the activity relative to the wetland. Um, like I said, I I think the wa- the wall is approximately in line with the. Side of the garage. You know, you can kind of see that here. So it looks like. Distance wise relative to the wetland, that along with, um. I saw a stake right behind this tree, I can't unfortunately, I think, see it in this picture.
When, um, I have a new neighbor there where the wetlands is, and um, the previous owner had his land surveyed. And when I built my house, I had my land surveyed, so all the pins are there. In regards to the property lines, if that's what you're can talking about.
Yeah, so so I guess the question for the commission is, do you want, do you want an updated survey showing the location of everything? Um, is a less formal plan, perhaps, okay, um. I'm gonna jump to the NOB real.
That tree that I thought you were referring to is still there.
I'm sorry, um. So this.
I think that's the tree you're referring to.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um. Because it looks like it's, I'm not sure, because it's, it, you know, I, there's that pin, but I don't know where that pin is relative to property lines.
So, you you you, this Chris Bassman, Jamie, you know where the wetland is, right?
Approximately, um, and like, that, okay, here's the pin, you can see in this picture here.
Yeah, I I think if we can use, when were those pins, when were those pins put in?
Just about, oh gosh, when did he sell, maybe two years ago?
I mean, I think that addresses it for this property line, but I have to admit, I think things are kind of tight. On this side, when I was looking at things again, right before the meeting. Um, in regards to this fence post here. And, you know, fences sometimes move, I don't know if that one has. Um, but when you look at the approved site plan.
Well, I do have a pin to the very left, um. Where Piscatale's property comes and meets mine, and then to the right, but the fence post is just part of that, and it's a straight line. I don't know if that's acceptable. So the pin that would be by that pine tree, and then there's one over here up by, um, where the runoff is. And those are.
You're saying there's a pin over on this shared property line?
Yes.
Where it says rebar found?
Yes.
And then.
That's the one that I believe is under that pine tree.
So if that's the case, my concern is that it kind of looks like. I mean, I I don't know, I don't know which direction it goes from here, but it kind of looks like it.
Bassman, Jimmy, what do you, what do you need, um, to feel comfortable enough? To make the assessment when we get the the application, do you need a a a full survey?
I don't know, I was leaning towards it wasn't necessary, but then when I was looking at this picture again, I I kind of started to question it.
Well, you know, when I think about it, this is not my back corner, this is the property coming from what used to be Jim's property. Over to mine to make the line from here all the way down the side of my house. The property line is further back. Beyond, this isn't.
Yeah, because I don't know if this is a property corner, or if this is like a a midline.
It's not a corner.
And, but again, looking at where this fence post is relative to the wall, kind of gives me concern too. Um, and it might be that it's all fine, survey would certainly answer that question. Um, you know, a survey asks, so it takes time.
Is there? Is is the A two the only one, or is there a different survey that would be done maybe more quickly?
Hmm, there are surveys that could be done more quickly, I don't know that they would necessarily, I mean. Another alternative perhaps is a property mark out, and if the property mark out reflects that everything's on the property. That might be a way to move forward, and if it doesn't, then move forward with the full two weeks, A two survey.
Jamie, this is Commissioner Begmon, what's a property mark out?
I'm not sure who. Ryan.
Commissioner Begmon, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I'm reading the chat, so I'm I'm, I could hear you, but I wasn't listening.
What is a property mark out?
Uh, it it's basically where the, a survey crew goes out and marks the property line. Uh, it would be basically doing this. Um, but it might not be so formal, setting pins is a little bit more, you could usually pay more for that, whereas a a property mark out would probably just be wooden stakes. Kind of like what you see when we ask for things to be marked out on site or site blocks. Rather than it being proposed buildings, it would be the property line, so. Ryan Thompson said GIS looks like it might be a few more feet back to the corner. I've seen the GIS be off by sixty plus feet, so I do not trust the GIS for property boundaries.
Well. I I guess, given some of the.
I don't think it's off by that much here, but, you know, to that end, we're look, we're looking at less than a sixty foot discrepancy. Um, so I don't know. I guess the the.
I I don't wanna, this is Commissioner Bassman, I don't wanna not do a a survey and then have us. Have questions at the end that compromise the ability to make a decision. Sounds like we need a survey.
I'm a severe, my point is that the pin may not be at the, right, yes, I agree, so the pin may not be at the corner. Um, which is.
It's definitely not, the one under the tree definitely isn't, that's for the sideline.
Yeah, and I can actually see right here on the site plan, it says rear rebar found, so maybe it's this pin, I don't know. Um, but again. I think this six foot vinyl fence. Is likely. This fence here. Which when you're looking at it from below. Looks really close, but I don't know.
I mean, honestly, my, you know, my neighbors came over and checked out when the masons were there and um, and. Uh, they were all fine with what was going on and they looked at their property lines and.
Yeah.
So.
To put it in context for the commission, I think, you know, I mean, obviously the commission's concern is looking at impacts what relative to wetlands and water courses. The only way it really falls into the wetland commission jurisdiction is in making sure that you have authorization from all property owners. If it were in fact to be over the property, so.
And it wasn't that long ago, we had a wall that. We had issues with in terms of where it was located versus property line, so. I guess, one man's opinion, I'm leaning more to a survey than uh, something different. Anybody else wanna chime in here?
Is this Commissioner Marzke, I agree a survey would be appropriate.
Alright, so, like I was saying, a survey does take time, um, I don't know if we wanna. Um. I would, I I I would say generally speaking, it's gonna take at least a month and a half, two months to get a survey, so.
Are we stable enough for 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 that activity to take that time?
This wall has been there, uh, uh, when was the wall constructed?
It's almost two years now.
So, uh, it to that end, I think, I don't think this the stability of the wall is a concern, um. And I don't think there's erosion that's a concern, um. So I don't, I don't think waiting for the survey.
Here's the problem.
Is gonna cause any immediate changes in condition from what has been there for the last two years at this point, um. Alright, so we're at our May twenty second meeting, so.
July?
July twenty fourth. Um, with maybe, so I'm thinking July twenty fourth. Have an app, well, July twenty third have an application submitted for receipt, so it will be for receipt of the twenty fourth meeting. Um, and then the property owner should start contacting, getting, you know, contacting surveyors. And reach out to me if you, um, you know, sooner rather than later. If you're finding that the timeframe's gonna be longer than that, so that way we can. Make, we can make some adjustments, because I do know that sometimes. Um, things can be really booked out, so I don't wanna set on a reasonable goal, but I also don't wanna make this a longer timeframe than it needs to be. Does that make sense for Rose?
Yeah, so that's the first step and then I won't fill out an application until after the survey's done, is that the process?
So, basically have the survey done and have an application um, that would. Use that survey as a site plan and then also the commission. Um, express that they'd be looking for an engineer to be weighing in on. The preexisting conditions versus the current conditions relative to stormwater changes and the stability of the wall. And I will send you a follow up outlining these things, um. And then, so, but that's something that could be running, you know, at the same time. Some surveyors, you know, are surveying in engineering firms, maybe you can do one stop shopping, um. What was I gonna say?
You have some recommendations for for Rose regarding that?
Yeah, so I was just gonna say in regards to the preexisting versus. Current conditions, um, if you don't have records of the. Um, permit application materials from when the house was constructed, all of that information is in our files. So, um, you know, whoever you hire, if they want access to that information, we can email it to them and or they can stop in and look at it.
Okay.
And I'll outline that as well in the file. Okay. Anything else from commissioners on this for tonight?
Hey.
Um, and any follow up questions from Rose or wait and see if you have any questions after I send you that follow up?
Yeah, I think I'm okay, I'll just um, review what you send me and then I I will be looking for recommendations for. The surveyor and engineer, and like you said, maybe I could combine it and and use one, one resource.
So we don't provide recommendations, but we do have a list of surveyors that, you know, we we've seen.
Yeah, I understand that.
Applications from, so I can make, I can send you that list.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, thank you. Applications for receipt in the wetland twenty five oh five oh two, this is a receipt, no action tonight.
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent, I'm gonna throw a little quick curve ball at you. And say, I think this might be something I can do administratively, so I know it's late, but if we can take. Five minutes to take a quick look at it, um, and maybe get an assessment, maybe you guys don't have to look at it again in July or in June. Um, and I am now remembering why I was looking at Ryan Thompson like I should know that name, because Ryan Thompson is here for this next item. So, essentially, this is a septic repair, a lot of times this is something the commission lets me do administratively. It is fairly close to the wetland though, so I did just wanna bring it to the commission real quick. For you to take a look at, um. The septic repair is being driven by some interior renovations that they're doing, I don't know the exact circumstances of why. Um, East Shore is uh, requiring the repair, the re- the replacement, but, um. The existing leaching fields to be abandoned are located to the rear of the site. Um, the wetland line is uh, in the southwest corner. Um, replacement system's a little bit closer to the house, a little bit, I think, further from the wetlands, this. The corner of the system is twenty nine feet from the wetland edge. Erosion controls during construction are a little bit closer, um. The system itself is being reviewed by East Shore District Health. Um, as far as removal of the old system, the existing tank is to be properly removed. And it's my understanding that leaching fields will be abandoned. Um, access would be on the far side of the house from the wetland and you're seeing approximate town boundary. Because this is on Valley Road, which you have to go into North Branford to get back into Branford, um.
Where are the new leaching fields?
The new leaching fields are uh, kind of northwest to the existing ones, um, closer to the house.
So, so both, both the septic as well as um, and and the fields are moving away from the welling?
Yeah, if if you don't mind, I'm Ryan Thompson, i- i- if it's okay, if I could speak.
Yes, please.
Go ahead, jump right in.
Alright, thank you, uh, yes, see, if if you can scroll down just a a little bit to show the the existing. That existing field to be abandoned is, you could see it's at its closest point. It's uh, it's a little bit closer to the wetland than the closest point of the new system. So I'm proposing, so basically the existing system is trenches. I'm proposing to use G S T geometric system um, to replace it. Uh, which obviously is state of the art, it's it's the, it's the preferred product um, anywhere near wetlands and shoreline. And it unfortunately, uh, twenty nine feet is the the farthest I can get away from it. Because uh, I have to stay up to twenty five feet away from any under drains and foundation drains. And so I'm putting it at twenty seven feet on the, you know, from the corner of the house. But you are technically just a little bit, maybe two or three feet further away from the wetland where I'm proposing it than where it exists. Um, and there really isn't, there aren't too many options for this this property, uh, there's, there's only really one spot to put a system in there and that's where I show it. Unfortunately.
Looks to be a good candidate for agent approval.
Uh, and and I will say also, um, I did get a letter back from uh, Brittany Nappi at the Health Department today. Saying, uh, essentially I have one thing I need to correct. I inadvertently have a typo where I so showed twenty nine feet S D R thirty five. That should be nineteen feet S D R thirty eight five. Once I make that change, this septic plan will be approved.
Over here.
Yes, oh, yeah, right, right, right above where your mouse is, yeah, right there, yep. I I I, that, that was twenty nine feet before I made a change uh, to the. I I put that extra section of twelve feet on to the uh, east. And uh, when I made the change, I forgot to change that that label, so. That's that's the only thing that needs to be changed to get the approval.
Anyone feel differently?
Anybody, anybody wanna see this again?
Not I.
Okay. Jamie, it's all yours.
Alright, thank you everyone. Thank you for sticking around.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Looks like uh, we don't have any new agent approvals, no correspondence and announcements. Does anybody wanna hang around or do we wanna call it a night? See you, thanks.
Have a good night.
Tonight.